The meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled planning board meeting, October the 11th, 2021. First item is the approval of the agenda. I'm assuming that most of the public in the room is here for the half moon heights. So I think we'll go ahead and recommend that we move the half moon. Heights agenda item to the first item. That way you folks won't have to sit through another item that you're not interested in. Right. The first item under new business will be half moon heights. Do we have a? Yes. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda, but move half moon heights to the first item under new business. Wait a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. Then we have approval of the minutes from our September 13th meeting. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to go through those. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 13th. We have a second by Neil. All in favor? So we have an approval of the minutes from September 13th. Okay, new business, a conditional zoning district, half moon heights. E twenty one dash forty four C Z D. This is a conditional zoning district. And. Matthew's gonna get us all up to date.
Hey, yes, as you mentioned, this is a C Z D application for a major subdivision titled Half Moon Heights. The applicant is Half Moon Land Holdings. The owner is Triangle Ballantyne. Is it taking a while?
While they're getting queued up here. Obviously, everybody has has rights in the room. We have a developer that has rights. We have a landowner that has rights, and then we have the community that has rights. And we want to respect each other. So when public comments are made today, let's be respectful of each other. Let's not try to cheer and clap or boo and hiss and those kind of things. Thank you.
Okay, so this proposed development is for a site that is just under thirty four acres off of Timmy Rock Road. It is currently zoned PRD C Z D, and they're proposing to zone it PRD C Z D as well for single family detached homes. The number of lots has changed. I believe the latest number I had going into this was ninety eight lots, but you guys will see a revised site plan by the end of the presentations tonight. That'll have the exact number of lots. We did have a neighborhood compatibility meeting beginning of September. There was significant public turnout. I believe we had, you know, right around fifty or sixty folks here and on Zoom. We had twenty five, roughly twenty five pre-submitted comments for that as well. The topics that we've been hearing throughout this process relate to environmental impacts, impacts on the view shed, stormwater management, traffic concerns, both through neighborhoods and on to sixty four. And, you know, some liability issues, the way this this property would be opened up to adjacent apartments and subdivisions and reduction of property values. Taking a look at the site, this is a bird's eye view. In the back, you can see Bear Wallow. Little bit closer, you see High Top and Bank Mountain, and then Bald Top as well. And then you've got Corn Mountain. This is, if I'm wrong about any of this, don't, uh, don't hold it against me too much, but, uh, that's, that was my best guess at trying to give you what the view is there. And as you saw, the elevation of Corn Mountain, that twenty three thirty two, and that is the hot point of the site. So looking at existing conditions, I've got a couple more photos to show you as well, but upper left, you are looking on the side of the of Half Moon Trail, on the side of the development, looking back at Wolf Chase. And that would be one access point there into the development. In the top middle, this is entering into Ballantyne. And I've got another picture of of Ballantyne, but trap, those are the two routes that traffic would use to access the site. Upper right is actually an access or where the property boundary touches a right of way for Gypsy Lane as part of the Corn Mountain Estates Development. It is, you know, it's undeveloped and, uh, but there is essentially a, an imaginary property line right there in that picture. Bottom left is a, another site from the Half Moon Trail proposed area. This is right near the current home site, which is a vacant home on the, on the property. And you can see the Duke Power Transmission Line has a right of way that runs through here. And the other two pictures are just a couple of different sites, uh, kind of typical of the of the property, heavily wooded, this property. I mentioned the two other photographs. So photo on the left, this is, uh, you know, a shot of the, you know, the street that would be traveled as it relates to some of the homes in this subdivision. This is the Wolf Chase access point. This is Half Moon Trail, uh, the street. And on the right is Ballantyne Commons. This is actually not Half Moon Trail, but there are, uh, you can navigate through that parking area for the apartments. Half Moon Trail actually does cut off to the left and circles around one side of the development. This is the street that goes straight through and hits a, another road at the, at the edge of the apartment complex, and you would turn left if you're entering, and then you would connect back with Half Moon Trail, essentially traveling through the parking lot and drive aisles for Ballantyne Commons. So, uh, in these maps, you'll see that the legend is covering Ballantyne Commons. Apologize for that, but that is what I was discussing, the, the access coming from on the south side. On the north end, you can see the access point coming through Wolf Chase to the subject property, which is highlighted in yellow. Uh, one thing you'll notice about these two maps is that they are identical. Uh, the, the zoning, uh, classification would stay the same. The, the site plan for the site is what would be being updated and approved as part of this rezoning process. The future land use map highlights this area, designates this area as medium intensity neighborhood. There is some natural resource or agricultural designation to the north of the site that's downhill from the site. That is a floodplain for Wolf Penn Creek. Uh, there is business center adjacent to this property as well as it fronts, um, or relates to, uh, the, the commercial activity on Timmy Rock Road. And, and you can also see a little bit better the access through Ballantyne Commons this part of the neighborhood. So looking at medium intensity neighborhood, it is a transition zone. It is intended for infill development, uh, and walkability is a major issue that's highlighted. This is also designated as a preservation and enhancement area, meaning that any development that occurs in this area needs to be compatible with the surroundings. Some other development guidelines that relate to this are the density between two to eight units per acre. See, at least sixty percent open space, architectural guidelines, and that will also relates to the encouragement of walkable neighborhoods. And so, uh, there are some conditions related to that, uh, that these comp plan items. Uh, we also noted that Henderson County designated the this portion of Corn Mountain as a conservation area, and that actually came into this, this parcel sum right here at the high point. Uh, it's actually related to slopes. And so if you take a look, uh, this is not at the same scale, but this is the same stretch of red right here that goes into the Half Moon Heights area. And that relates to slopes that are twenty percent or greater. So this is the Henderson County Future Land Use Map. It does not govern your decisions. However, it is just a data point for you to understand, uh, the slopes that will be impacted. Under population and housing, I mentioned that there were some, uh, guidelines, uh, that were, uh, referenced about walkability. And so this portion of the comp plan talks about recessing garages, uh, putting in them in the rear, or at least having the front porch be out front in order to encourage and create a walkable environment. This also discusses the use of public space and providing sidewalks and amenities of that sort. The section over here again discusses, uh, further discusses the de-emphasis of garages and the importance of front porches. Uh, under chapter three, natural environmental resources, because this is a large wooded track, uh, there are a number of concerns related to natural and environmental resources from steep slopes, uh, which are referenced, uh, it does discuss controlling, uh, development on steep slopes, uh, greater than thirty percent slope. We'll talk about slope a little bit more later. Um, it also talks about clustering your development. So you're, you're retaining quality, uh, open space, which also in this point, in this case relates to the preservation of woodlands. So clustering the development in one collection, in one location so that, uh, the remaining open space can be preserved. And then also using low impact stormwater management practices, uh, which I believe, uh, the developer will discuss as well. Uh, looking at chapter seven, transportation and circulation, it talks about dead end streets having a pedestrian connection. And so that is something, uh, that you'll see on the site plan as well, uh, that's been proposed. Uh, this again shows the area around Gypsy Lane. Uh, I'm going to go back real quickly. These two photographs, uh, this is just kind of about midway up the hill. You kind of get a sense of that it's sloping off, uh, to the left, uh, in that photograph. And then this is of a ravine, uh, that's right near Half Moon Trail, uh, but it, it also dives down and it's very steep in that area, and that's where a lot of stormwater, uh, is going to head. Taking a look at the tree survey, you see very large number of trees. Uh, we have, we received a total of nine hundred and twenty five that were twelve inches or greater in diameter breast height. The proposal is that twenty seven percent or two hundred and forty seven of those trees would be preserved. Of those preserved trees, sixty six would, sixty six percent would be pine. That leaves seventy three, um, I'm sorry, fifty seven percent. Oh, excuse me. I got that wrong. Twenty seven percent to be preserved. And other preserved, sixty six percent are pine. That will leave seventy three percent to be removed. And of the removed, fifty seven percent of those are hardwoods. Um, and there could be some modifications to this as we look at a revised site plan. This is overlaying the, uh, this might be the second revision, or this is either the first site plan or a revision that we got early on overlaid with the trees. I believe those numbers will be adjusted. So taking a look at the site plan, as I mentioned, this is going to be modified slightly, but this one, this version does show these connections which were required to, uh, Wrestling Pines Lane. This is updated from the one that was, uh, the concept plan that was shown at the neighborhood compatibility meeting. Uh, you'll see, as I mentioned, that the connections, uh, along Half Moon Trail, Half Moon Trail is built. It is constructed. It's currently gated at this end. But it was required, uh, as an emergency access for Ballantyne Commons. This rest, this whole parcel was also owned by Ballantyne Commons. But did not have any proposed development. It was phase two, but no specifics were provided. So it was originally slated to eventually be, uh, multifamily housing, and that, at the point that this got developed, this gate would go away. And this, uh, street would be opened up. The sidewalks are shown in the dark black lines. Again, the lot layout is shown that this has shifted essentially this layout of streets and lots and open space uh, is what is being presented tonight for development. I pointed out those connections, and so I just wanted to reference the subdivision ordinance that requires those connections. Let me go back real quick. I'd miss, I'd mentioned a pedestrian connection as well. So that little stub out to Gypsy Lane is right here. And so when you have a dead end street, the comprehensive plan calls for there to be pedestrian connections made. If you can't drive, at least you can walk. Um, again, those connections, uh, we have street connections required as part of the subdivision ordinance. The planning board and their recommendation related to rezoning cannot offer conditions that would require varying from the subdivision ordinance. This is a zoning, so the zoning ordinance is what is guiding this. There are, you know, issues or topics related to goals and strategies within our comprehensive plan that, uh, the planning board, uh, would want to offer conditions related to. That is okay. Subdivision ordinance, um, is guided through a different process. Variances from the subdivision ordinance have to be approved by the Board of Adjustment. So this site was reviewed by the Development Review Committee. So some of the modifications that have occurred are from feedback from our, our team, which includes our, uh, stormwater and water sewer and engineers, uh, and, and other works department. It is generally compliant with the subdivision ordinance and the zoning code, um, and has worked. Uh, the developers worked very hard to bring it into compliance with the comprehensive plan as well, and has met a number of goals and strategies related to the comprehensive plan. The tree board reviewed this, uh, in, uh, mid-September, and they, uh, made the following motion. They essentially made a comprehensive plan consistency statement, finding that it was inconsistent with the number of, number of items within the natural resources, natural and environmental resources chapter of the, um, comprehensive plan. And then they proposed that if it is developed, if it is ultimately approved, that they would have to protect the trees according to, uh, section fifteen four. And that they, uh, for any plantings, that they would use those, uh, that are on the recommended species list. Uh, moving on to the staff recommended conditions, we have eight conditions that have been proposed, and I'll, we have talked to the developer about these conditions. They are agreeable, uh, for the most part, and in cases where they're not, we've, um, put their, uh, kind of counter proposal. And then we'll obviously, uh, hear from the developer on this in more detail. Uh, the first one is to size the stormwater system to retain runoff for a twenty five year event. The baseline is ten, a ten year event. So this is asking to go further due to some of the concerns that we've heard from the neighboring community and, uh, looking at the potential impacts, uh, based on the slope of the land, uh, and the amount of development proposed. The second is to utilize low impact development practices. Um, in this case, the developer proposed to use pervious concrete for the sidewalks and driveways. We do need to confer with the Public Works Department on the use of that type of concrete for, uh, the sidewalks, uh, and whether it's appropriate or not. And then we would also need a review if that's appropriate for the driveways. Uh, that's one possible way of limiting, uh, the impact as it relates to slowing down water. The other ways would be related to bio retention, uh, swales and ponds, uh, which were also given some consideration. Generally, due to the slope, uh, the amount of water, uh, that's going to be running off, the developers felt like they need to, um, retain that through an underground storm tech, a series of underground storm tech systems. Number three, uh, this is from the tree board, protected trees that have been proposed to be preserved in accordance with section fifteen dash four. Um, again, that, that states that you have, uh, used a certain type of fencing and that that fencing be placed around the tree and the width of that, uh, preservation area is based on the diameter. So if you have a a twenty inch diameter tree, you would have twenty feet of, uh, protection zone. And so, uh, in this case, the developer essentially is looking for an efficiency, uh, in that they will already have to protect certain areas using silt fencing, and rather than have the two by four, um, fencing with the orange fencing as proposed in our zoning ordinance, they're proposing just to utilize the silt fencing to designate the protection area. Uh, and then again, that they would plant based on the recommended landscape species list, uh, which actually I, uh, is required as a general standard in the zoning code. Number five is that they would recess garages or shift parking to the rear of the lots and make the front porch the primary architectural feature fronting the street. The developer in this case has proposed that they, uh, would agree to a majority of the homes, fifty one percent of the homes having recessed garages with front porches. Number six, pedestrian crossing at Road C, that needed to be adjusted. They have revised their site plan and moved where a street is coming out. And so I believe, uh, this, this condition still stands. Um, they would, and we can kind of iron it out at final site plan, but they would need to shift their crossing down, and it actually will end up at a better location now with the, um, with where the, they are proposing for one of their loop roads to come out. Uh, number seven, reduce the impact of development and preserve quality, undisturbed open space by clustering development in areas outside of thirty percent slope. Thus preserving existing woodlands and avoiding grading of steep slopes in these areas. The, uh, site plan point out the thirty percent areas are essentially clustered in, in this general area of the site is where we're seeing over thirty percent slope. Um, and so I will let the developer, uh, respond to that. So in this case, this is one where the developers, you know, kind of counter, uh, or, uh, yeah, counter proposal to the condition was not known yet at the leading up to this meeting. And so they will address that here tonight, whether they're able to meet that or how they, uh, propose to meet that. And then the last one is the, uh, right of way connection to Gypsy Lane, which would be for pedestrians and utilities, uh, would not be a street connection. And so, um, the, that wraps up the conditions. Uh, there were, uh, we got seventeen pre-submitted comments. Those were put together, packet and provided to you. The length of time it would take to read out there, very lengthy, involved a number of pictures, um, rather than, um, read through all those tonight. Uh, we've provided those to you, and they will be part of the record. Um, and then, of course, we will hear from the public as part of the public hearing tonight. So the submittal that we had received had issues that were going, related to steep slopes are going to require a variance, meaning they would have to go to the Board of Adjustments, uh, of adjustment to get, um, a, uh, a variance from, can you, uh, move the bottom? Zoom information. Uh, so you can see on this, uh, table here that, uh, if you have fifteen point one to twenty five percent slope, your minimum lot size has to be increased, and you have a maximum amount of impervious surface that can cover the lot, and that's set at twenty five percent. It's even greater, uh, more greatly reduced down to twenty percent if the slope is above twenty five percent. So, uh, knowing those areas, knowing which lots align with that type of slope is something that the developers kind of present to us. Um, it was our understanding they were going to need a variance, um, um, based on email communication today. They believe they've resolved it. So no variance would, would be needed. So that was really important to point out that, uh, what you see tonight staff is not reviewed. It could potentially need a variance, uh, related to slope. Um, and so we will review that. So just want to make sure everyone's aware that just because if you are agreeable and approve a site plan tonight doesn't necessarily mean that it is a hundred percent compliant. It may have another step before it would be compliant, meaning it would have to get a variance. But as I stated, the developer has led us to understand that they have addressed those concerns and no variance would be needed. Can you advance next one? So at this point, I'll answer any questions, um, or we can allow the developer to do their presentation. And then, you know, if there's any immediate staff questions, happy to answer them. We can also let them, because there's a lot of, uh, questions as to what the revised site plan looks like. So it might be good to let them walk through that, and then we can, then you can address staff and the developer with any questions you have.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for city staff right now? I have one. Um, you said the current property owner is Triangle Ballantyne.
That's my understanding, yes.
And they've developed Ballantyne.
That's correct.
And the approved C Z D is for more multifamily on this thirty three acre site?
It, it was phase two. It was, it did not show any layout of buildings, anything like that. Our understanding was that they're multifamily developer. This was phase two of Ballantyne Commons, meaning it would have been apartments, but there was no specifics in that approval. It was just shown as a.
Not a site plan, so it was not an approved.
It was on a site plan, but it was on, it did not show any construction activity on that lot. It just said phase two, left.
And just.
Like, just Half Moon Trail. The only thing shown on it.
You remember?
Next step.
That's all.
They'll return when they're ready to propose some development on that portion of the, of the property, which is happening now.
Got it. Thank you.
Under a different owner.
Any other questions for city staff?
I need a more clear definition of pervious concrete.
Yeah, so I, I don't have, it's a, I guess in theory, it's, uh, a hard enough surface that meets, uh, the same standards as concrete would, but it would allow water to drain through it rather than runoff.
All right. So if the, um, if there's no more questions for city staff from the board, we'll allow the developer to go ahead and make their presentation to us. We're going to get what's back here up there now. Because we're not getting it. Normally do. And I can turn around. It's, it's probably easier to see this anyway.
That's, that's it.
It's usually back here too. That's okay. I can turn around.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
They're still working on it, so.
If you're getting something here now. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and make your presentation. If they figure it out, that's fine.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Schlotterbeck. Born and raised in Fairview. My dad and I are looking to, uh, build Half Moon Heights here in Hendersonville. Um, I thought it would be good to kind of go through how this project has evolved. I'll make it rather quick, but, um, there've been a lot of changes, and so I just wanted to kind of go through those. This was our first iteration of this plan. It never made it to, um, we, we did not even submit this. This was not the first one that we submitted to Matt and Planning. It was just our first iteration, and I wanted to show that we were at a hundred and twenty one lots, because part of one of the things I want to talk to tonight is, um, how we have worked with planning and listened to community feedback on reducing numbers. Um, and so this is one of the things that, although it never made it to a submittal, it was where we started, and we, we pulled back from that point even before we began. So this was our first plan that we ever did. This was the first plan that actually made it to. This was the first plan that actually made it to submittal. And so this is what we submitted and talked to the community about. I think the actual plan we submitted showed showed a couple of different items, but one of the things to note is that the cul-de-sac road, which is actually on the south, it is the uphill side of the project, but it is the southern side of the project. And so as I kind of refer to this drawing, I might refer to north or west and north is at the top of the page. The southern side here, we had the cul-de-sac running all the way along all of the property lines. The loop road was installed for connectivity. We we had other cul-de-sacs there as well, but but planning through that process, we learned that connectivity was important. And so we have phase two and three, they connect to half moon trail. It wasn't possible to do that with phase one. This is the drawing that we submitted to the tree board. So from here, we've now gone from a hundred and seven total lots to a hundred and one lots. We've slightly changed road configuration, working with feedback from planning and we've added grading designs. So you can now see that we've got our house pads, but I'm also showing where the proposed grading would be. And this is important because those grading slopes are detrimental to the natural environment and and really, you know, you're not putting houses on it. So you're you're having to destroy something for not a great reason. And so it's one of the things that we have addressed. This is our fourth, well, I call it fourth, but it's probably our sixteenth design. This we submitted to Matt, I think this was after, it was after our tree board meeting. And so there haven't been any other official meeting since. But this was kind of our submittal. They had asked for a animal corridor so that animals could continue to get through from our property to other properties and basically leaving natural vegetation as connected as possible. Again, we still have the grades that are encroaching, you know, down a lot of the slopes, something that we eventually try to mitigate. Sorry. Yes, thank you. And and now we're down to ninety-five lots. Does this have a laser, Matt? Okay, thank you. So here on this lot, we still had our animal corridor. I'm showing an, or sorry, an overlay of the the last drawing that we that I just showed you. So this this hasn't changed from that last drawing, but it's important to see. I think this was based off of our first submittal to planning. You can now see in black is everything that we were currently proposing. Red was our first submittal. It it just kind of helps show how we were evolving the project and trying to listen to all the feedback that we were given. So here in red, obviously, we we had a lot more encroachment on this natural area and that kind of refers to that thirty percent zone that Matt alluded to earlier. We have an animal corridor through here, one that grows again on our our next iteration, but we we were showing improvement here, trying, we were starting to really understand what planning was looking for. We do have a narrow corridor that kind of connects through this whole property now, which was important because now we've got trees going fully through the property. So we're kind of working with those steep slopes. We're working with the trees that are existing and trying to leave that connectivity for for animals. Then if we go to the next one. If you could go, yep, perfect. So this is our latest drawing. And so this has all changes today, everything that Matt has talked about, some things that Matt referenced in in that we have made changes to, but that he has not seen yet. The green here is actual thirty percent slope. Down here is the ravine that Matt alluded to or or talked about with, I think he showed some photos of it. Here we're now showing connectivity through to this property. This property over here is not developed. Same with this property down here. It is not developed, but due to the subdivision ordinance, leaving connectivity to those projects is important or future projects, potential projects. And so we are now installing a road. It it'll have a road sidewalk. curb, curb and gutter too, Bob? Do we have that shown on there? So it basically, I I think the intent there is if this pro, if this land down here becomes a project, they will not need to encroach onto our property. It limits the liability for the city, asking them to do work on our property and and that work is just done. If it never gets used, it just becomes a, I don't know, place for for kids to ride bikes and scooters. So we have this here and here. Additionally, some of the feedback we received from the community is that our initial design didn't show enough amenities for the community. So we weren't, we weren't trying to actually make a a community, but just trying to put as many homes as we could. So one thing that we've done here in this corner is we've now placed, this is going to be a dog park. Thank you. So this here is a is shown as a dog park and this here is shown as a playground for children. We're leaving as many trees as we can here. The reason we're taking this area is because I have one of the storm tech systems that Matt talked about. So there'll be an underground storm tech system, which can be buried up to eight feet. And there's no issue with putting either of these items on top of it. So stormwater will come from the south end of the site down the hill. I'll capture everything on this western road as well as the cul-de-sac road. And that will come to an area here. And then all of the water for the project on this loop road here will be collected in a storm tech system under the ground here. So again, in this area here, we want to leave as many trees as we can, especially with this park area. So one of the nice things about these storm tech systems is they come in chambers. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them or not, but they're they're essentially like septic systems and but ten or fifteen times larger. And so you stack these chambers together in in a certain way, using certain materials all all set forth by our engineer. And so our goal is to kind of locate that that whole system on this side where everything has already been cleared. There's a current house that sits about right here. It's got a long driveway. There's a large clearing here in the front. I've got the tree plan, which I'll show you and and you can see that there, right now, there's not a ton of trees here. So we want to try and get as much of that storm tech system into area that's already been disturbed. I don't think there's anything. So here, this, I believe, is condition eight on Matt's plan. And so this talks about where we will need to have connectivity, either pedestrian connectivity or utility connectivity. And so we will be providing that. It didn't make it onto this plan. That doesn't mean we're not doing it. We will absolutely do that. It is, it's one of the things that we have no issue with. I think if we go to the next drawing. And one more, please. Let's, let's go one more. If it'll load. So here is, here is our tree survey with our site mapped onto it. And one of the things that we've really one of the things we've really been focusing on is keeping this as this area here as wide as possible. Believe I showed you in an earlier drawing, we had like this narrow sliver. Now, on average, we're somewhere around sixty-five to seventy feet. And so what's important to note is that these trees here are everything over twelve inch diameter. But we'll be leaving a bunch of other trees as well as rhododendron and as much as we can through here. We we did mention that we would like to change the condition of the tree board to allowing silt fencing. And the reason being is the way that stuff is installed, I won't have my my grading subcontractor driving over any of it. There are metal stakes driven into the ground and so it's not good for equipment. And the other thing is I'll I'll be, I'll have to fence this whole area anyway. And I will, in a little bit, I'll get to how many trees we're proposing to plant. And and so with that, we really want to use as much money as possible to replant this site and really make it beautiful. We go to the next drawing. So again, I did the same coloring. So red is what we had proposed to Matt. Again, this was the drawing after tree board. And since then, there's been three or four iterations, but black is where we're at today. And so we have pulled this area here back even further. We've widened this animal corridor. We've saved more trees through here. One of our biggest changes was taking these seven lots and making all of them basements. By doing that, we weren't creating pads at street level. And so I didn't have to chase grade all the way down a hill, further eliminating more trees for for no good reason. And so that was one of the things we did. We we took out seven lots along this backside here in order to get to where we're at here. And we will still provide that connectivity through here. So what we've, what we've done and what we're trying to do is stay as much out of this thirty percent area as possible. But since we couldn't stay out of all of it entirely, we are extending that area beyond the thirty percent conservation area and really trying to like bring it as far into this community as possible. We felt that was a good balance and and so that's where we're at. Can you go one more? Sure. How many more pages we have? No, if you could go back up, that would be perfect. We'll we'll stay there for a minute. So I just want to touch on a couple of things that have changed in regard to some of the data of this site. It it gets pretty dense pretty quick. So I'm just going to highlight some of the the main items. We've gone from the first submittal, not not the first drawing that we had initially with one twenty-one, but our first submittal of one oh seven. We had a proposed density of three point one eight houses per acre and we're down to two point eight two houses per acre. The required open space for a development like this is sixty percent. We are now exceeding that by fourteen percent. So we have seventy-four percent open space. Proposed impervious. Let's see. So our proposed impervious, we were at about thirty percent. We're now down to about twenty-six point six percent, which doesn't sound like a lot, but we've actually reduced that number by about fifty thousand square feet of impervious feet. And our proposed common open space has gone from, we were required to have ten percent, we're at ten point seven. We're now at twenty-one point four percent proposed open common space. And so one of the things that Matt and I have talked about and is not shown on this drawing, but with this great area through here and and all the way up to Corn Mountain, I think we'd really like to implement some kind of hiking trail. I don't know how best I want to do that yet. In the past, on other projects, we have actually had equipment go in and cut in a four foot wide path. I think for this, it would be much nicer to leave it natural and have it more like a hiking trail. And so I I don't know the specifics on that yet, but this is listed as proposed coping, proposed open common space. And so we will try and make this a part of the community. So now I'd like to highlight on or highlight some of the or the largest challenge with this site. And I think that is the conservation of natural habitat. It's tough with a site like this because we have so many trees. We've got nine hundred and twenty-five trees. I've sat through probably four or five other projects in the last two months in this room, listening to other developers, and I've read through maybe ten or twelve other projects. And a site like this, with a project like this, we have more trees on site than any other project. We are actually saving more trees than any other project that that I have read or seen. It, there's just a lot of trees there. And so where we were at initially was saving six hundred and seventy-eight trees now down or sorry, we're removing six hundred and seventy-eight trees. We're now removing six hundred and thirty-seven. So we have reduced the number that we are removing, increased the number that we are preserving by forty-one. And one of the things I'd like to mention is that if you go to the next page, Tyler. The next, yeah, the second one down. Perfect. If you zoom in on that. One of the things, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, I I get the subdivision ordinance, the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan mixed up. I believe this is in zoning or is this subdivision? Zoning. So in zoning, talks about credits and incentives to preserve vegetation. You take the caliper of the tree that you are saving and based off of that caliper, you can, you are awarded a tree credit. Where this is important is if you are required to plant a lot of trees on site, you can use this to offset that and then not have to plant any trees. Seemed wrong to me. It's not what we're doing. But I think it's important to point out, the required amount of street trees for this project is twenty-nine. That's, that is, you get to that number by four thousand square feet, every four thousand square feet of road, you owe one tree. Of the hundred and fourteen thousand square feet of road that we have on our property, we are only required to plant twenty-nine trees. Again, this seems wrong. The proposed street trees that we are offering to plant are three hundred and ten trees. Required buffer trees that were required. Since we are in an area where the neighborhoods are all similar, they're all residential. I'm required to plant zero buffer trees. And it's not good for the neighbors. It doesn't show good faith. We're offering to plant two hundred and nineteen buffer trees. Total proposed trees that we're offering to plant is six hundred and twenty-four. Along with the tree credit that we could claim if we wanted to plant nothing, we we have a tree credit of eight hundred and eighty-one trees. Again, we're not, we're not asking to use that. We don't want to use that, but I did want to make it. I did want to bring it up. The the last thing I want to mention about trees is when you take the number of trees that we are required to plant and then you you subtract out or you take the number of trees that we are offering to plant and you subtract out the number of trees that we are required to plant, we are offering to plant twenty point six times more trees than than required. Again, looking at all of the other projects that I've seen go through, I haven't seen one other developer, and I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but the projects I've gone through in the last couple of months, the project, projects I've sat through, no developer's offering to plant two or three times more trees than they're required. So we realize that we are having a large impact on this site. But we want to do the right thing. And so we are trying to do that. The next item I would like to actually be on mine. Next thing I'd like to talk about is stormwater. The neighborhood below us, Wolf Chase, they obviously have large concerns with flooding and stormwater. This in part is due to the fact that they have homes not only built in current wetlands, but they also have homes built in a one hundred year floodplain. I don't know why this happened. I would assume the floodplains were updated after this development was built. I'm sure that's the case. But so I I do understand their concern. So one thing I would like to say is that Matt and and the planning team have asked that we provide a twenty-five year storm tech system or or we provide a storm tech system that can retain water of a twenty-five year flood. I want to note that this was actually something that we proposed to them. This was not something they asked us to do first. We proposed it to them. And it's something that we fortunately have the space for and our engineer is currently designing. So that is something that we're one hundred percent on board with and and we plan to do. That will, of course, the way storm tech systems work and the way I'm sure you guys already know, but we are not allowed to have any more water leave our site than currently leaves the site. So we will be retaining all water on site that would currently be retained on site. And then in these large rain, large flood events, we will now be retaining more water. And so we will actually be helping this neighborhood. The last comment I would like to make is that I heard people laughing about the pervious concrete. It's actually pretty simple. If if you just go to YouTube and type in pervious concrete, you can see concrete trucks loaded full of water and they just release the water. And as it's pouring out, I mean, it soaks right into the ground. It it's not hard to find. It's it's a very easy Google search. One thing that we have, oh, actually, I do have, I've got one other comment after this. So Matt had said that we were proposing to do sidewalks and driveways and that he wanted to talk, I I'm not sure who he needs to talk with, but there needs to be discussions about the sidewalks. We've actually slightly revised what we're thinking. We still want to provide the pervious concrete on the driveways, but if it doesn't work for the city, for us to do pervious concrete on the sidewalks anyway, what we're looking to do is actually reduce the footprint of our houses from what we were submitting was we'd looked at a a bunch of different. Um we'd looked at a a bunch of different house plans, and we wanted to be able to have house plans of size forty foot by sixty feet. Um rather than worrying about which lots we could put those houses on, we were trying to go for that everywhere. It's not that we were going to build that size house everywhere. Our plans are to build houses between seventeen hundred square feet, and I think. Twenty-eight or thirty-two hundred square feet. Um so smaller to medium sized homes. But we just wanted the flexibility to kind of move those homes around where we wanted them. Um and we would just let market demand drive which houses went where. Um what we're looking to do now, due to uh that that comment Matt made about. Um the variance being needed if we stayed with the size homes we're at. We're looking at reducing our house footprint on about half of our lots from the forty by sixty foot pad. To forty by fifty foot pads, as well as we have increased either the depth of lots, if lots allow it. Or we have eliminated a lot and made our lots wider so that the lot is now larger. And the the forty by sixty foot house pad still falls within the uh guidelines of, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's zoning. Um and actually, sorry. So, okay, so thank you. And you can pull that up if you want, Tyler. I included that in that. That is, it's that first one. So this this is what Matt was and I was referring to. Um if you are in areas. You're in areas uh. Fifteen to twenty-five percent slope, you are allowed. Um a- all of our lot sizes already met the condition, so that was not the issue. Um thi- this was met everywhere. The one, the one area that we were, we were having some difficulties with, with the current lot sizes and current home sizes, was here at maximum lot coverage by impervious surface. And so what we've done is I've either made this number work by reducing my house size. Or I've made this number work by increasing my lot size. And so now my impervious numbers meet all over the site. I do want to add to that um impervious. I'm not exactly sure on this, but I'm I'm ninety-nine percent sure that impervious requirements for the site, for a PRD site, is not allowed to be over thirty percent. And where we are at currently is under twenty-two percent. So the site as a whole is already well below the impervious requirements. Um it was just the individual lots that we were having some difficulties with, and again, that has been resolved. Um I think that's that's everything that I wanted to to talk about, but I'm sure there will be questions that I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I wanted to see detail of the of the sidewalks. I I've read some quickly.
Uh we we have a detail, it should be um should be on our map, one of our master plans. There, uh no, that's typical lot. Uh down at the bottom, is that it? I think that's it. So tha- that's all we have. I mean, if if you're looking for more than that, this is the only detail we have currently. Were you asking for a detail of the pervious concrete walk?
I just wanted to see how the thing was was built.
Ah, yeah, I we don't have that. I don't have that shown on here yet.
It's a roll curve. You don't have a space, planting space between the street and the.
So we are doing uh planting trees, but we do not have it in between the walk and the road. We have it on the other side of the walk.
Anything else, Bob?
That that was talked about with public works, and and so I think that's just how we arrived at that.
Good, Peter.
Okay, um, quick one on proposed condition number five with regard to recessed. Um your counterproposal is to have a majority of homes with recessed garages, not all of them.
That is correct.
Could you give an indication on site plan which homes that would be?
Uh eventually or right now? Um we we haven't gotten to this. Um which homes that would be recessed? I honestly don't know at this point. Um we've, the the amount of changes that we have made to this, trying to make it better and better. Like I said, I mean, we're we're probably somewhere around twenty to twenty-five revisions of this thing. And so it has been our full attention trying to get this plan dialed in, and we have not spent time on that yet.
Any other question?
Uh what what's driving the fifty percent, fifty-one percent?
A- again, it's just um so every condition placed on a development like this increases the cost. So um it's not, it's not that it can't be done. Um but not every plan is is set up like that. And so when you restrict plans and restrict different sizes, it just has the potential to increase costs. And the cost, we're just trying to keep these things affordable. One of the things I didn't mention is that we're looking to provide homes. Initially, it was in three fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um due to materials and labor and everything, we've seen an increase. That we're anticipating both of those numbers to increase by about twenty-five thousand dollars by the time we get to construction. Uh because it's going to take us quite a while to do the horizontal construction. Um and by the time we get to vertical, we're anticipating our cost now to be somewhere in the three seventy-five to four seventy-five range.
Other questions?
I I do have a couple. So the the you did the math on the trees.
Yes, sir.
And the the new develop, the new site saves about fifty trees. Do you know that the percentage, it was originally was twenty-seven and seventy-three percent. Twenty-seven pres- preserved, seventy-three percent removed. Um probably pretty close, because it's only fifty more trees, but.
Yeah, uh percentages on that, let me see.
I was kind of surprised, because I heard, I heard there was a new site plan that was going to preserve, have more open space. And I expected that number to go up, I mean, even more. I I I understand, I do. Um when you look at the overlays, I I think.
The amount that we're shifting roads, that we're reducing lots, and that we're changing things, um you know, that's not the current one. Uh on my slides, we've got the current one. Um but so, you know, if you if you take this section here, this is actually a decent example. So I mean, if we just look at this whole section, you know, I pulled the cul-de-sac all the way back to here.
So all these trees.
Yeah, all of these are now saved, and you know, we widened this area. So this was like a twenty-foot strip. It's now been widened to about a seventy-foot strip. But when you, when you put that on this map, I mean, you're you're only gaining so many of these uh larger diameter trees. And so we really are trying to preserve as many as we can. Another area that we gained a bunch was along this area here. Um we we had a bunch of cut here, and we moved our cut from here to to having fill on this side. We lost, uh I want to say somewhere in the realm of like six trees by by moving our fill slope over here. But we gained somewhere in the realm of about twelve to fifteen trees um by eliminating the cut on this side. So it's just, I mean, we are, we are trying to save as many as we can, but it just doesn't translate as well as we would like. Which is why we're.
Okay, so it goes to like thirty-two and.
Sixty-eight. Um can you show the the map where you have the subdivision overlaid on the tree survey? Because I want to talk about the 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 quest to only provide silk fencing to prove, to protect the trees.
I saw one.
Yeah.
So I mean, I understand, yeah, that that's, that's it, isn't it? You know, it shows, well, it doesn't have the road.
Go one more.
There you go, okay. I understand, in other words, if you've got a large area that's not going to be disturbed, putting silk fence up and expecting the grading contractor not to get in there and.
Sure.
And harm a tree or take out a tree. When you have um some of the the black dots that are right up in where. Things are going to be disturbed.
Hmm.
I just don't know that a silt fence is going to protect that tree the way, the the way the ordinance reads with two by fours in the ground and rails.
Understand, I do.
Orange, I call it snow fence. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I think um. I think the value added of planting more trees versus using two by fours. Um as fence, I I think it's, I think the value is there. Um if it's something that you had real concerns with, I think I would rather offer installing a second silt fence. Maybe five or ten feet in front. The reason being, you've got a second fence there, but I'm also retaining more soil, so I'm having less erosion. So in my mind, a si- a second silt fence is is at least doing something positive for the site as opposed to just spending money on two by fours.
Right. I wonder if we could work something out, though. Um in other words, if there was a very majestic red oak tree, which there are several of them on the property. I've walked the entire property. And it's up near where soil is going to be disturbed, or I would want to see something more than just silk.
I think that's completely reasonable. If if they're, yeah, but it's completely reasonable. Um. Is it just my discretion? Because I feel like.
Maybe we can maybe just work with city staff to to um put some extra protection. Around the large trees or the ones that are closer to the the disturbed soil. At any rate, we can talk about that when we talk about some of the conditions.
Yeah, I, the one thing I would say is just that I recommend that the conditions be as clear as possible. Um obviously, the developer has to agree with the the condition. They would do that at city council. And so if you gave clear direction today, we could speak with Joseph in the interim and try and have an assessment of whether or not that condition could be met. And how or not at city council.
Uh standing here, if we just said that every tree on this line. Over a twenty-four inch diameter. Twenty-four inches are over, then I think it makes it pretty cut, cut and dry, you know? Um and and I like that, too. I I love, I love clarity. And so then it's it's pretty easy for me in here. Uh I've got an Excel spreadsheet of every single one of these trees. There's a number associated with each and every one of them. It I I've got the diameter of each and every one of them, and so I can, I can easily go find that tree. You know, if it's twenty-four inches or over and just make it blue, or make it, make it something to where it stands out.
Right. So nobody disturbed it, okay. And this might be a question for um city staff. But when you go into Ballentine Commons up on the hill, Half Moon Trail. As it says private, TV two, but yet Half Moon Trail on the Wolf Chase side, when I was in there last Thursday. Uh it was garbage and recycling pickup day. City trucks were in there, so that's got to be a city street, I'm assuming. So.
Yes. It would be, it's, it is public up to here currently. And it will become public up to here.
Up to where the the property line with Ballentine Commons is.
That's correct.
Okay, so at that point, could they put a gate up?
No.
Okay, it has to remain open.
Yes. They they are required to have it for emergency access. You have to have a second access point.
Okay.
We have made a condition with the seller, since the seller, it's convenient. The seller who owns Ballentine Commons.
Right.
Selling me this property, and so when this issue was brought up by Matt, we have a condition in our contract that I am only buying this if this is left over.
Okay, okay, but it would remain a private street past the property line at Ballentine Commons.
That's correct.
And it would be a city street from there all the way back to sixty-four.
That's correct.
And the rest of the streets in Wolf Chase were all city streets.
No.
No.
Only half moon trail.
Only half moon trail.
Yes, that's correct. Uh just point out, Rusting Pines Lane, um if this property ever got developed, there would be another connection going out directly to sixty-four. It would be a public street as well.
Okay, and phase one is right here at the bottom of the stream.
Yes, sir.
Um with the gate open when you began phase one, I.
Oh, yeah, the the gate will be open for phase one, and I, you actually bring up a great point. That was another thing that we talked about with um the community. Uh leaving phase two alone, phase two and three alone until phase one is complete. To minimize the land disturbance at one time. So we will open up phase one. We will take out the trees that are needed for phase one. We'll do our grading, do our work. Once um once I'm building houses in there and ready to move on to phase two, uh that's when we'll start working in there. With the caveat that the way earthwork like this works, if I need more filter from down below. In areas that are already shown as either cut, fill, or land disturbance, I can bring that up the hill, because I would need that.
Right, okay. And you mentioned a a nature trail or a hiking trail.
Yes, sir.
Would it be, would it be possible to create the opportunity for connectivity? With the other developments if their homeowner association were selling client. In other words, the way you showed it, I don't, I don't know how it would get through lot twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Unless it came out on the road there, I imagine.
Well, Half Moon Trail will be city, and all of the roads will be city, so they could technically just take a sidewalk up Half Moon Trail. Um take the sidewalk across lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine to where the trailhead starts, and all of that is still city maintained.
So you would have like an easement belonging spots?
No, 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 I I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, there wouldn't need to be an easement.
That's right, you have a lot, no, there's a loop right right here.
So the trail would dump out onto whatever that circle is, and then you'd have to take the city street to to create connectivity.
Yes.
In other words, is there any way to bring it? I know there's a big hole down at the bottom of the property. There's any way to bring it around the backside there and bring it up by the power line?
You're asking if can it be connected back through?
Yes, in other words, you know, if it, you might lose a few lots, or the lots might not be up deep.
So, uh well, there are a couple of things to to kind of unwrap there. Right now, we've got this buffer. And I haven't really mentioned it. We've got this buffer for, there are three homes here. I believe this is Snowy Erit Way.
Um and that's Wolf Pen. That's Wolf Pen over there.
There's Wolf Pen over here, and so we have these buffer trees here for them, and and we're very happy to put them in. One one thing I would like to point out, though, is putting in trees like this. Um if we get into an uh an area where I am having to damage more existing trees in this area than I am replacing. That would be a concern of mine. I don't mind putting these trees in, and I'm happy to do it, but I I think there needs to be some kind of. Looking at this, and I I guess, I guess for this meeting, keeping things clear and cut and dry, I'm fine with putting these in. It's just the whole thing with tree preservation, right? Um it. It kind of doesn't work with that, or it might not work with that. Um eh to to your question with the homeowners association and a trail, um I think. I think something like that. The HOA here at Wolf Chase has zero interest in any of our residents being on their trail system that they have. Which is a reasonable request, and I have no problem with that. I would request the same. So if if they don't want people on their trail system, which I get. They pointed out the cost to maintain trail systems, the damage, the trash that could be left. And all of this by people who don't live there, so I. I would want to mention that, and I don't know what the answer to your question.
I did um last Thursday speak to some folks out walking their dogs and whatnot, and I did notice that there was some exclusiveness to that. Trail system, both in Pen and Wolf Chase.
Right.
Obviously, maybe years down the road, if there was the option or to have connectivity. Somebody that lives down by the creek could say, let's go look at the view, because there is an incredible view up there.
I I'm I'm with you.
The whole clear creek valley, you're looking at Bear Wall Mountain.
And I don't want.
So it could be an advantage for everybody.
I I don't disagree with you, and and I I want to be clear, I don't, I understand the concerns of Wolf Chase. And not wanting others to destroy something that they have built and created and maintained. Uh I get that completely. I would just be worried.
Hmm.
If they're not wanting to do the same, or I I don't know how that works.
And that's why I said the opportunity for connectivity in the future.
So to resolve something like that, be in the form of a condition that.
That's what I'm, that's what I.
I don't think that we have enough information related to the other parties that would be involved.
Hmm.
To be able to get to the point where we're making a very clear recommendations for a condition on that. Um I would leave it up to the homeowners association to evolve over time, let it happen advantageously, rather than it be a requirement of. Or just because those conversations just are.
Right.
Haven't happened yet.
But if the condition read an opportunity for connectivity, rather than just a dead end type. That that that's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, well, and I think. Just pointed out that there is.
You can get to the city streets. Yeah, I don't want to get hung up on it. Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, um we're going to go ahead and open up public comment, and just to get a, just to get a feel or a sense of how many folks want to speak. And when you come up and speak, we're going to ask you to give us your name and your address. Um whether you're in favor or opposed to it, and and then some of your concerns. And we do want to hear them, but just to get an idea of how many folks want to speak today, can you just raise your hands if you're planning on some? Okay, uh we'll go ahead and open up public comments then. Um and you're going to come up to the podium one at a time, give us your name and address, and you're addressing, you're addressing the planning board. Not the developer, not city staff. Go ahead and go ahead.
I'm at four and I do live at Wolf Penn. My question is really about the um concrete. I did happen to look up about uh that kind of concrete. And it says it has some soil problems as well as maintenance problems. And I know working on a project right now in Wolf Penn, um asphalt is very expensive. And so I would just like to, if I could get an answer, you know, about that. And it seems as if you need to have a special or a special field to be able to do that. So I'm always concerned initially, you know, things look really good. What happens in five, ten years? Is this something that people will be taking care of individually? Or is this something that has the, is there an HOA and that sort of thing? My other concern is why are we taking down soft, uh why are we taking down hardwood as opposed to softwood? And and perhaps I misunderstood that, but um that's why I was hoping.
What what we want to do here is you're addressing the planning board. I'm taking notes. We can ask the developer any questions. Now, during the neighborhood compatibility meeting, you were speaking directly to the developer, learning about the project. At this point, um this is public comments for the planning board. And I'm taking notes and I will ask.
Perfect.
Somebody on this board will ask those.
And I have one other concern, and that is of course water. We joke that it, behind my house, I I live at the most unattractive place possible, because I have a very steep hill behind me. And when uh we do have rain, and boy, when it rains in North Carolina, it rains. Uh we tease and say we got Gore Creek rising. So the water comes up, not quite to my shin, but it's quite large, it's quite deep. And it stays, uh it 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 stays better than an hour. So those are the things I'm concerned about. I understand there's holding tanks. Um but how is that water dispersed? Um and when is it dispersed? And is that something manual? Is it something that you do? So those are are my concerns. And as for the program or the the piece itself, I want to thank the developers for taking, you know, the concern of what's been voiced before. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Maybe also like to speak? So more hands earlier.
Um my name is Joanne Hobson. I live at forty-five Foxtail Court uh in Wolf Chase. I'm concerned about the number of homes um from one oh seven to ninety-five. I'm thinking it's a two-car ho- household. So we're looking at a hundred and ninety vehicles exiting Wolf uh Half Moon Trail. As an educator in Henderson County, I'm trying to get out of my neighborhood, heading west bomb, westbound on sixty-four. How are the one hundred and ninety cars exiting to get out to uh Chimney Rock Road? Uh how are we heading out to head westbound? Because at seven AM, you have school buses coming down. At seven fifteen, you have school buses coming down to pull out of my neighborhood right now, which is only I I uh we're not um, we're not all um in the morning commute as commute as it is. I can't understand how we're supposed to put in a hundred and ninety more vehicles to come out of my neighborhood. How how do I get to work? What what, so what are the roads out onto six sixty-four? I've heard rustling pine, did somebody say that that is going to be an open road out?
I think that's a future plan, yeah.
So we're looking at just Half Moon Trail right now?
Right.
Okay, so if they come through Ballentine Common, they are going to be heading eastbound onto sixty-four. They cannot head.
You have to do that little turn thing by the laundry room.
Uh that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobson. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Lois Van Reese. I live at one thirty-one Creek Walk Lane. I I want to piggyback a little bit on what my neighbor said about the traffic and also what was pointed out in terms of extending Half Moon Trail to be now a city street. And Half Moon Trail at the Ballentine entrance turns to a private road. Is it legal for those residents to drive the private road through the parking lot to weave around to get out the other way? That's my question for you. Knowing human nature and on this earth a few years, people don't like to drive through parking lots such as through Ballentine and wiggle through that to get to the road. So again, to piggyback on what Joanne said, those hundred and eighty cars, hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty are all going to come down Wolf Chase, Half Moon Trail. And try to act to either go east or west. And during the work week, that's virtually impossible. The other thing I want to ask the board is, it was pointed out, I believe, that you received seventeen uh letters from community members. I just urge you, if you haven't had a chance to read all of our input, that you do so before you make your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Janice Malendine, and I live at one thirty-five Creek Walk Lane in Hendersonville, which is right down the hill from the proposed Half Moon Heights development. I too live in Wolf Chase. We've had plenty of public interest in this plan and concern with the outcome of what your recommendations to the city council will be. On September first, as you've heard, we had scores of people at the neighborhood compatibility meeting, both in person and on Zoom. Um we gave the city a petition. Um that was signed by members of the Wolf Chase community. Many more have stepped forward after that was submitted, saying, oh, can I still sign it? But we'd already given it to you. Um objections expressed during that meeting made front page news in the Time News. I mean, there is a lot of concern in the city of Hendersonville about this particular project. On September twenty-first, another group of citizens attended the tree board meeting. And as you have heard, uh multiple letters were sent to them and the uh the, at the end of the tree board meeting, they voted against the development. That there are so many concerns with the forest, the canopy, the trees, the slope. And most importantly, in in my mind's eye, the development that lies below it all. Um with all due respect, uh the environmental impact of removing trees is dangerous for us living downhill. The increased water runoff from the removal of the canopy will cause flooding. They say they're going to add trees. You and I both know those trees are going to be the size of golf clubs. They're not going to be the mature trees that they're cutting down. That creates the canopy that protects us, those of us that live downhill. Several protected species of wildlife currently live in that forested area. I haven't heard anything said about that. And that's in your city planning codes. You you're protecting the wildlife as well. These are protected species. Erosion on the mountainous soil will affect the homes located below the proposed development as they deal with the storm rod runoff loosening the soil. With that, they are identifying their collection systems are going to be for twenty-five year stormwater events. That's still not adequate. We already have flooding in the Wolf Chase development. And we have it multiple times a year. Twenty-five years is happening now. And my belief is that's because of climate changes. The climate is dictating we have more storms, stronger storms, heavier storms. I appreciate they went from a ten-year to twenty-five year, but that's still not enough. And it's not going to affect them if it doesn't work. We're already at max capacity and we have flooding up to many of our homes on Foxtail, which isn't even in the floodplain, which is the Half Moon Trail residence. Erosion on the mountainous soil will affect the homes located below the proposed development as they deal with the stormwater runoff loosening the soil. We've all have seen Haywood County and everywhere else in North Carolina, what loosening soil on a steep slope is doing. It's eroding, it's causing massive problems. Right now, the culvert that goes under Highway sixty-four multiple times a year this year already. When we've had severe storms, you can't even see the culvert. There is so much water, the water comes up, it's not going under Highway sixty-four from the Wolf Creek. It's coming back on Half Moon Trail, which is our only entrance and exit into our subdivision. We had the stormwater expert come out and look at it. And it's like, so can we have them, you know, make a bigger hole so more water can go through there? Because obviously, it's not holding, it's not channeling the water the way it's supposed to now. And, you know, Mike said, no, the state's not going to do it. It's a multimillion dollar project. We're stuck with that small culvert going under sixty-four, which can't hold the stormwater now. The increased flooding is going to happen in Wolf Chase Development. And again, like I said, it's going to be caused from frequent, more frequent and intense storms. Any development will allow additional runoff from storms in our hundred-year floodplain in an area that is already pushed to the maximal. Increased traffic, as you've heard, is going to negatively impact Half Moon Trail going to and from Highway sixty-four. Not only from the new development, but we have had, I can't tell you how many times. There's a gate there now. Ballentine residents can't come down there. You want to ask me how many times Ballentine residents or commercial trucks that went into Ballentine and thought they could get out coming down Half Moon Trail smashed through that gate, which is for emergency vehicles only and is locked. We're not only concerned about the hundreds of new cars that's going to jam up our HOA. We're also concerned about all the Ballentine residents that are going to make an easy exit through our HOA. Hundreds and hundreds of cars. That street's a public street, but right now, half the time, the city trucks don't even come down and plow it. We have our private guy plow it. When you come to our entrance, which is the entrance to Half Moon Trail and Highway sixty-four, that's where the buses don't come in in that street. It's a public street, yeah, but they're not coming down that street. It's not big enough. They're not, those buses aren't going to go up into their development either. You know what those buses do? They stop on Highway sixty-four. You know how busy that can get. And traffic in both directions stops several times a day. You've got elementary school kids, middle school kids, and high school kids. Multiple times a day, we're stopping up Highway sixty-four. The parents of all these children are driving down to the entrance of our HOA, right there at Half Moon Trail and sixty-four. They're not only waiting for the buses to put the kids on the bus, but they're later waiting to get the kids off the bus and take them safely home. Those buses aren't going to go up into this development. Can you even possibly imagine or want your child getting off the bus with who knows how many cars jamming up the entrance to our HOA? And that is our only entrance. That is our only exit already. When we try to get out of our HOA, as was mentioned, early morning traffic or later in the afternoon, or anytime an Apple Festival or a football game, or you name it. It's already incredibly difficult. And the only way we can get out is to turn out and get in the turn lane and and try to go down there to avoid collisions. Please don't put more traffic on our road. We are barely handling it now. Please don't add any more stormwater. We are in the floodplain. Any runoff from what they do is going to affect us in in areas that you can't even imagine. We understand the importance of building homes for growth in Hendersonville. Please just build them elsewhere. So the ultimate expense does not fall upon the residents of Wolf Chase and Wolf Penn. Upon the residents that currently live there and have lived there for quite some time. Encourage the developer to find flat land elsewhere with not as many trees in the county to develop it. So it's not going to violate so many sections of the city's codes and plans, which we have talked about repeatedly in all the prior meetings. And not put the neighbors in such dangerous proximity to the damage it will cause on a very steep forested mountain. Please, say no to the Half Moon Heights. The Wolf Chase and the Wolf Penn residents are are depending on you to protect us. Thank you for your time.
Good, anybody else?
Hi, my name is Lisa Yetter. I live in the Wolf Penn, and it happens to be right along the line where not just my visuals, but I'm a little concerned about security, and that's something that we haven't talked about in that I bought into my neighborhood and we have all kinds of security that's a part of our being a gated community. And I I feel really blessed, but all of a sudden now I'm feeling pretty vulnerable. And I just wondered, when I look at that map, if you were to leave the trees that are there, there's a pretty dense amount of trees that I think just allow people to respect that, you know, the neighborhood next to them is is just there, but you know, you're not going to be wandering into it. I'm also right at where the Duke uh easement comes through, and it's totally scabbed of trees. So every once in a while, I'll get kids that'll hike up there and come into the backyard. And, you know, and I know I can't plant trees, but I just wondered if instead of replanting the golf club trees, if we could give some just consideration to keeping them along that whole already scabbed area of the um of the Duke easement. Or some consideration to just security. It's a lot of people. Just my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joseph Calata, I live at thirty-eight Foxtail Court, uh Wolf Chase. Uh I won't duplicate what people have been saying, except for a couple of items. At Half Moon Trail, someone mentioned that cars come down there uh thinking they can get all the way through. Let me tell you, that's a hill coming down there. These people, all of a sudden realize they can't get through. And man, they throw on the brakes like you wouldn't believe. And it was mentioned, excuse me, uh some people tried to smash through it. I called, personally called the police on somebody that tried to do that, and they never came back. I'd like to try to offer one solution. Leave that cotton pick and gate there that separates us from Wolf Chase Heights. Uh Half Moon Heights, I'm sorry. Let them make an exit or an entrance onto their own property off of sixty-four. Why impose on us? Why? You know, it would just make a mess for every reason that uh as Malendine mentioned. Um it's, there's too much traffic on there now. We can have difficulty sometimes getting onto sixty-four going west. It's very difficult at various times in the day. Plus, you want to get out of there at six o'clock on a Sunday morning, you're going to have some difficulty. Keeping that gate there and letting them build their own, drive into their own subdivision seems to be the best answer, as far as I'm concerned. That's it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Gus Marchank. My wife and I live in Wolf Penn two at forty Snowy Erit Way. And if you look at the map, you'll see a lot number thirty-three and thirty-two in that general area. I would suggest to you that that entire area should be bright green, not as you see it. Because my property line butts up right next to that embankment, and I'm on top. And there's a valley down there. And thank you for walking the property, sir. And if you will recall, you saw a lot of bold.
Old, a lot of old.
That's.
Large old.
Yeah. And that is where our property line. And that is where our property line is. And if I fell down that, which at my age, I could probably do without any help, I would probably roll to the street if the boulders weren't there. It's steep. Now, that doesn't affect me. But affects those properties right there. Doesn't affect my water. One of my neighbors suggested there was a lot of water that came through from our area and it does. I've got pictures that look like, have you ever seen a whirlpool on top of a water grate? And we had one the other day. So water will move down quickly. From the top of a hill, it will reach its lowest end. Now, I have submitted to you in writing that I'd like for you to read. And there's no sense for me to repeat it because it's already been said. But I have to say a couple of things. I'm a volunteer hospital chaplain at Partey. Also have some business experience in my past and have a real estate license that I don't use. North Carolina. When I get called into the hospital, it's because a family is experiencing the worst event of their life. I can't begin to tell you what I see. You don't want to know anyway. But I will tell you this. I am tired. I'm extremely tired of people dying unnecessarily in a traffic accident. Whether it's a motorcycle going up sixty-four to Bat Cave and not being able to slam on brakes and his wife flies over and she's dead. It happened recently. Or other situations. I'm tired of it. Yes, accidents are going to happen. It's the part of who we are. But not unnecessarily done because of a lack of vision on the part of the people who have those decisions to make. I'm tired of that. And if you saw what I saw, you would be too. Life lost because of the stupidity of those who thought it didn't really matter that much. Who may have been in the decision-making process or those driving or those innocent people receiving the blunt of a stupid decision. I'm tired of it. You have an opportunity to fix that. And let me just tell you this. If you look at Wolf Penn gated entrance, you will notice that the highway department has been so kind as to try to divert the people from three lanes to two lanes by putting up these plastic. I don't know what you call it. Boomerang things. Because they, because they boomerang all over the place. And so far, we've only had about four of them knocked out. Last year, they were all decimated. Because people are driving fast. I don't care what the highway department says it's doing. It's a racetrack there in front of Wolf Penn. And these people are trying to go from three lanes to two lanes. Some of them slow down, slam on brakes, pull into the Wolf Penn to air, turn around, and you can see them trying to get back in the lane to go buy some apples, bless their heart. There's more to this development than just traffic. Water. Wildlife. Now, I've had some conversations with the developer and his son, and they are nice people. And I applaud them for trying to do the right thing. Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, you're in the right church, but the wrong pew. You have a good idea. Not that property. It's not going to work. And you're going to have the burden of trying to get it to make it work. It's the best way you know how. And what's going to likely happen is they're going to come in there and do the best job they know how at your guidance. And then if it doesn't make it, they're going to leave and we're going to have a scraped piece of property half done. And who knows what's going to happen next? But I have a suggestion. Did you know the city of Hendersonville, to the best of my knowledge, does not have a park west of I twenty-six? Wouldn't that be a nice park area? I think it fits perfectly for it. It really does. When you think about it and you walk it. So I would suggest to the developer and to you, the decision maker, that it is the right church, but the wrong pew. And the land is not conducive to any building whatsoever. It should be utilized in a better way. In the real estate business, we call that highest and best use. And that doesn't mean a thirty-five foot high ceiling for a hundred and one or ninety-five or seventy-five houses. It's a park. So I'm going to respectfully ask that you stop it right here. Or in your power, word it in such a way that is very clear that this particular site is not conducive to any development. And oh, yes, one more thing. You know, I always got one more thing. Do you recognize this? For those of you who don't, you go across I twenty-six heading toward Hendersonville on the right-hand side. Before you get to Clear Creek Turnoff at the stoplight to the right, there's this beautiful sign that says thirty years. Tree City USA Arbor Day Foundation Growth Award. I believe if we continue the way we've been going, the city of Hendersonville is going to lose that nice distinction. And that wouldn't be right. Because the city of Hendersonville is a wonderful place to live. And like one of the people said, there needs to be a balance between the need of homes and the need of the environment. You cannot clear cut seventy-three percent or whatever it's going to be of mature trees, no matter what type of wood it is, that has roots that have gone down into the ground for two, three, four decades and replace it with sticks. But thirty, forty years from now may be as big. That's sort of like saying that my teeth, which is false, are just as darn good as the ones that God gave me. They're not. Because they have no root system, whether it be teeth or trees. Ladies and gentlemen, please stop this. Please stop it. No disrespect to the developer. I would love to see him build some homes in a wonderful area that he doesn't have to deal with all these things. They're fine people. But it is the wrong property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gus. Anybody else? We have a Zoom call.
Yeah, we've got.
Zoom call and you'd like to speak?
If you're on the Zoom call and you'd like to speak, please use the
We have a new point or a new subject that hasn't been covered yet. Or if you just want to reiterate what somebody else has said, you can use the raise your hand feature and we'll unmute you.
Good evening, board. This is Laura Lowery. I'm a reporter with the Hendersonville Times News. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to know with the changes that have been made since the neighborhood compatibility meeting, what the square footage of the houses will range in now? And if those are still going to be two stories with three bedrooms, two bathrooms and two car garage?
Okay, we can clarify that for you with the developer. Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Or if you have additional questions.
Yeah, Laura, if you had additional questions, if you want to use the raise hand feature again, we can unmute you. Go ahead. We're unmuting Galaxy Tab S2. You can proceed.
Okay. My name is Catherine Servon. I live in one, one hundred Brookstone Court in Wolf, Wolf Chase. I have two questions for y'all to think about. One of the things is the developer was promoting these as workforce housing. And my question is how feasible somebody who's making maybe fifteen, twenty dollars an hour for them to buy a home that's going to range anywhere between three hundred and seventy-five thousand to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars? I know I made a lot more money than that when I was working and there's no way I could afford that type of home, especially if you're, you're raising children. The other thing is they spoke about maybe connecting the the green spaces. Okay. And one of the problems with that is our trail system, we maintain insurance on that. So if something happens, we're covered and we also do the maintenance of that. So it's not a matter of just having people go down there and trashing it. But you know, that may end up increasing our insurance. So these are two, two other things in addition to all the other issues that were brought up at this meeting. And I thank you for giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you. Your hands going up.
Laura?
Use that raise your hand feature.
Who did you?
Unmute you.
Laura, you've been unmuted.
Yeah, I just wanted to double check also the lot sizes. Has, have those changed at all?
We can clarify that as well. Thank you. Anybody else want to raise your hand? And unmute you?
Anybody else?
We're not, no one else is raising their hand.
Okay, we're going to, at this point, we're going to close the public comment portion of the meeting. And based on, based on some of these comments, does anybody on the board have any questions for city staff or the developer? Go ahead, Peter.
Is our, is there any peripheral fencing around this project at all? No, no, I didn't think so. Just, thank you.
I have a question. Is the landscape plan binding? And it's really for Matt. Is, in other words, if we approve the site plan, is, is the tree count, something has to be met at building permit?
So it is a conceptual landscape plan. The final landscape plan would be part of the final site plan, which comes after city council's approval of the preliminary site plan, which is what you're being at this point. So just like stormwater and utilities, all of that is preliminary and conceptual at this point. Any substantial changes between what is being proposed now and what would be in the final site plan? If it crosses thresholds that are outlined in the zoning code, then it could potentially have to come back through the process. So if there's a major modification, it has to come back through. If it's considered de minimis or minor modification, then those are things that are looked at by staff.
So if he's saying, I'm putting in six hundred new trees, then he could reduce that amount by what, ten percent before he'd have to come back or?
Yes.
Another question?
Yes, I've got a question. I've got a question in relationship to the proposed conditions that you had noted. I wasn't clear regarding recess garages. I didn't get a clear answer on that. Is it mandatory? Is it not going to be addressed and what percentage?
So in the comprehensive plan, it outlines some design guidelines related to creating a walkable environment. Putting garages out in front as the, the principal architectural feature is, is considered not, is orienting towards cars rather than towards pedestrians. And so in our most walkable neighborhoods, if you look around, especially older parts of core downtowns, you'll see that a lot of the parking garages are actually alley loaded and do not have, or they may have a driveway that runs along the side of the house. And then you have a rear garage or a side entry garage in the back. And that way, the front porch is the dominant architectural feature. And so that's essentially what this is calling for is to pay attention to design and how it impacts the pedestrian.
I understand that part. Can we make it a mandatory condition?
Cannot have mandatory conditions. All conditions that's
All conditions have to be agreed upon by the developer.
So
Prior to going to city council.
It would be
Or at
Or at city council.
It could be a condition that we could add.
It could be a recommendation from the planning board.
Right.
But the developer does not have to agree to it.
Is there enough room to have cars go for rear with the lot?
That the, the developer would have to answer that question. Yeah, yeah, come on up. And so as we get into this part of the deliberation where we're discussing the conditions and maybe have some technical questions, the developer is allowed to have some back and forth with you guys, just so you know.
Thank you. I guess the question is, is there room to recess all of the garages?
Well, to even, is there room with the change in your plans and the size for the housing to actually get a house and get a car to go around the back? Right, rear parking.
No, there is not room to do that. Additionally, I would like to add that the reason garages are put on the front is again, a cost thing, which it's, it's not, you know, it's a cost thing as far as making homes more affordable for people. So even in, you know, neighborhoods where houses are selling for millions of dollars, you still have the garage close to the road. Sometimes you have a side load if possible, but it's, it's just cost efficiency. And so having separate roads behind the houses or even alleyways does not work.
Okay, so with a proposed condition, it says here that a majority of the homes will have recessed garages. That's why, is that a possibility?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So recess just means in the, in the sense of that condition, our porches will be proud. So in front of, and so yes, that is, that is a possibility. For fifty-one, I have proposed fifty-one percent of the lot. I believe planning's recommendation was different, but that was my developer proposed condition, was for fifty-one percent of the lot.
And while you're standing there, can I ask you another question? Okay. In reference to your stormwater cisterns, you commented where one would be by the playground.
Yeah, underneath the playground. Yeah, underneath the playground.
Underneath playground. That's, is that phase three?
So yes, that is phase three.
And where would phase one be?
So, okay, it is in phase three, but I would need to install it. Actually, Gary, are you still here? Oh, thank you, sir. Would you be able to come in and and give us some? They're asking about installation of the storm water system or the storm tech systems and their process and when they would need to be installed. So this is our civil engineer. He's designing it and has a much better grasp on it than I do.
Thank you. Gary Davis, David Civil Solutions in Asheville. One more requirement is the rate of runoff after you develop the project cannot exceed the rate of runoff before it's ever developed. In order to keep that rate below what it runs off now, you detain it. And there are various methods of detaining it. In this particular case, we're detaining it underground in what is essentially a humongous septic system. If you've been down the roads on belt sites, you see these big orange arches and they're stacked up. They all connect together. The ones on this site, there'll be three, four, at least size wise now. They're probably each one will be as large as this parking lot out back. So it will hold a lot of water. And the way you keep this from discharging at a high rate is you have an opening at the lower end that next down to something very small that causes that water to back up into the system and not discharge at a higher rate. They locate them underground. They they're essentially four feet tall, about eight feet wide. Each chamber, we call them chambers, because each one's about, depends on the type of this particular model number used, they're anywhere from four to seven feet long. They're all interconnected. They're connected with piping. They have stone under it, stone around the sides, stone in between, stone on top. They can be a depth, as depth is maximum of eight feet cover. So therefore, you can build something, not a structure, but you can build a playground, you can build a park. We've seen various other things that people put on top of it without compromising the system. There's outlet box that controls the discharge to those to those systems. Again, your ordinance requires the first, there's two aspects to me back at two aspects to a system is water quality and water quantity. Water quality is handled by the stone and the infiltration in the ground. Indeed, these are called infiltration devices. So also as part of the water quality, you have to back the system up and hold it or discharge it over a long period of time. In this case, the town's ordinance is a minimum of forty-eight hours. So the water would trickle out, as it were, over that period of time. And because you have to hold it that long, systems get pretty big. The quantity aspect is for the city's ordinance is two-year, ten-year and not to overflow in a twenty-five year storm. Indeed, these are designed not just to overflow, but hold back twenty-five year storm. And and going through the calculations, because the smaller storm is the one that controls how big it is, in this particular case, we even can handle a fifty-year storm inside the systems. That's in a nutshell.
I think part of the question was when would they be installed?
I'm sorry.
Good information.
When and where?
Where? Okay, in the upper corner, upper left-hand corner, in the middle, at the bottom, you see that kind of a white area to the right. That area, yes, that would be phase one. Phase two would be to the right of the road in that, in that, there you go, right there. And phase three, or phase one, rather, I don't think I have enough, it would be down in the somewhere in that vicinity, right in there, depending on my configuration and so forth. They don't have to be in rectangles. They can make them in any shot, any size configuration, because they all connect together.
All three would not be installed.
They would be. Perfect.
Perfect, okay.
When do you do it? You don't do it right away because you stand to, if, first thing you have to do is get an erosion control plan. That erosion control plan may have ponds and those ponds filter the water as such. And once the construction is done, then the ponds and stabilize, the size stabilize, then at that time, you install your storm drain system. Otherwise, they can be contaminated with what you get sediment in and contaminating the stone. Then you start over again, just like any above ground pond or below ground, whatever it is.
So they're all in the common spaces?
Yes. Underground. And you don't lose, you don't lose the use of those areas either.
Right.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got, I've got some notes. I think, okay. There was one question about the pervious sidewalks and driveways. Having maintenance problems. Are you aware of that? Have you read anything about that?
Yes.
Is there going to be a homeowners association that will be funded to take care of that maintenance?
So there is, and I I'm leaning towards agreement with Matt here that we remove sidewalks from pervious concrete. I don't need it. Like I, I forget what the exact statistic was, but our impervious calculations are well below what we need them to be. Give me one second. So we are at, we we have to be under thirty percent impervious and we are at twenty-six percent impervious. So the difference there is fifty thousand square feet of impervious that we don't need. So it it sounds like it's going to be a maintenance issue. It sounds like it's a concern. So I would opt, we remove those sidewalks, especially since I have made the houses and lots fit within the impervious requirements. And that just eliminates, it eliminates that issue. We were not trying to, you know, do anything sketchy. We were trying to, you know, work with the city and try and offer, you know, unique solutions. So that's all that was.
You're still considering the driveways?
Yeah, I still like the driveways. Those would be homeowner maintained.
Right.
And that's easy.
Okay. What about the, I think there was a traffic impact analysis done. We haven't discussed that. And traffic was an issue that came up several times during the public comments.
And so we did, the traffic impact analysis was triggered by this project. We actually had two rounds. The report came in. There were a long list of comments on it and from our consultant who does the review. So the city does not have a transportation.
Expert.
Expert on staff, so we armed that out.
Consultant to review.
That's correct. So then there were some initial revisions that were needed, just basic, how they got the information, what information was provided. Those types of revisions were done, resubmitted and reviewed again, and there was no mitigation recommended. And so that's why there's no conditions related to traffic as a, as as it relates to what we've proposed.
There's already a deceleration lane for half moon, correct?
That's correct. And it's a right in, right out at Valentine.
And it's really, because it's one way, right? Okay, so the traffic impact analysis didn't require a signal or?
No, it was looked at and determined by the folks who put together the TIA that it wasn't warranted. And then that was reviewed by our consultant and he concurd.
And this is not something that's done by the developer. It's done by an outside.
The developer is a client.
You subcontract it out.
And then we review it.
And then we review it using our.
To ensure that the information provided by the developers, traffic engineers is too standard and correct.
And they took into consideration that it wasn't done during, on a school day?
They made modifications related to school traffic based on DOT's feedback. They look at surrounding, any surrounding development that would also have an impact. They looked at what the traffic impact would be with no development and what it would look like after development. And again, any other surrounding development that maybe have gotten approved but not built yet.
And there was, there was, there was some concern about school buses. Now, my understanding is that on a five-lane road with a center turning lane, if you're on the opposite side of the road from a school bus, you're not required to stop.
That's correct.
That's correct. So, and that's what that is, is a turning lane in the middle. So if I'm headed west on sixty-four and somebody pulls up right at the corner of Half Moon Trail with a school bus, behind me, the traffic heading east would have to stop, but westbound traffic would not. What happens though? Do we have school buses? And maybe somebody in the neighborhood could answer this. Do we have school buses that are stopping headed east? And then the westbound traffic doesn't have to stop. How are those kids going to get across the Half Moon Trail? I don't, I don't get that. I don't understand how that works.
There were some issues that were brought up at the neighborhood accountability. I just want to note that the developers proposed to put a bus stop, you know, have a school bus stop right here where the mailbox cluster is.
Where the mailbox cluster is?
Yeah. So there's a crosswalk right here.
Seems like it would be a lot safer than sixty-four.
I would, that'd be my.
And I just don't understand how how.
Speed is the issue, right?
It would never drop. I wouldn't think so. It's fifty miles an hour. Okay, okay. So they're stopping now on, at the corner of Half Moon and sixty-four? Okay, which stops the traffic behind them, but not the westbound traffic. And then they're going up into the neighborhood. Okay.
Do you have any information you can share on when the traffic counts and assessments were performed, the days of the week and the time of the day? And actually, I guess in this COVID world, what time of the year?
So that is one thing that our initial report, that was the main feedback from Kimberly Horn, which is the subcontractor that planning used. Their biggest critique, and to my embarrassment, we did not catch on the first time. I requested that we do the report. We were just trying to meet all the the dates. And so when we got to this process and Matt said, you need to request a a traffic engineer, I did so. He said he could go out there. We sent him out there. And that was, that was kind of how that happened. Come to find out, we did that in May. And so when we did that report, school was not in session. And so their, Kimberly Horn's biggest critique was that that was not mentioned on the report. And so what we did was reached out to NC DOT. We then used a factor of, there's a five percent difference in traffic from May to June due to, due to school. And so we increased that five percent. There is no traffic data for COVID and how that has affected the area. In order to make sure that we were being as proactive as we possibly could be, we included a a factor of two percent for COVID reductions. Based off of five percent for school, we felt that two percent was, we felt that one percent was probably accurate for COVID. We gave two percent as the factor. And so we increased our numbers by seven percent total. And then we additionally decreased our project size. That we still did the trap, the second traffic report was with the hundred and seven unit calculations. And so we are now at ninety-five and that's the plan that I'm coming to you with. So we have reduced that again another twelve and we were still well within compliance.
It was also.
Can I pick up on the traffic also? I don't recall that one of the speakers mentioned situation, for lack of better terminology, helicopter parents who dropped their kids off and sit at the bus stop in the morning and are waiting at the end of the day. And I see that in a lot of developments. None of the traffic studies that I saw, that I recall addressed that within that development. Is that correct?
That is correct. We did not. I mean, it's it's interesting, I had, but I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that. And so I, it was not something that that was done.
I think the study was started on June fifteenth and school let out on June tenth or eleventh. Somebody, I think it was Lois from Walk Lane, mentioned human nature. So once that gate is open, if I want to get to Ballantyne Commons, I'm headed west coming from Edneyville, let's say, I'm no longer going to go all the way up to Howard Gap Road, catch a couple of lights and come back down to get into Ballantyne Commons. I'm going to make a left turn on on Half Moon Trail. I mean, it's just human nature. It's an easier way to get there. There's two less traffic lights. I mean, it is kind of tricky to maneuver that. If there were a condition in place to to slow that traffic down at the developer's expense, would that be something that you would consider?
Such as speed bumps or am I?
Or even one of those, they make, they run off solar electricity and it tells you your speed and the speed limit. And it does tend to slow people down. I know they're not cheap, but it tells you your speed as you're approaching it and it has a speed limit posted.
I don't, without having looked at that, I could not agree to that right now. It doesn't sound like a bad idea. I, but I have no idea if that's a hundred thousand dollar cost or a ten thousand dollar.
I don't know what they cost either. I just know they slow people down.
I I wouldn't, it doesn't sound like a bad idea to me. I just couldn't agree to that right at this moment.
Go ahead, Matt. Sounds like you have something to say.
It would also be a consideration for public works, be in the city's right of way. And so there'd probably be some considerations that would have to be consulted.
As far as speed bumps or?
Even those signs.
Any kind of sign, okay.
I I don't know what the requirements are for public works and speed bumps though, but maybe that's something that could be looked at as well.
Yeah.
It would just be a public works question. I mean, we could, we could look at that, but I don't believe that we are using speed bumps on public streets in the city.
It doesn't work well with snowplows.
No, it does not.
The culvert where Wolf Pen Creek goes under US Highway sixty-four, it's a double, the kind of rectangular shape, they're they're pretty large. I mean, it's a significant culvert. And I did see on Thursday where some debris had backed up, but it did not appear that the water ever went over the roadway. Has anybody ever, I guess I'm asking the folks that live there, has anybody ever seen the water get up over sixty-four or is it?
We can send you all kinds of pictures of, you can't even see the culvert anymore. The water is so high.
So it's over the top, backed up.
Stormwater into the yards of Apple, across Apple Trail. Yeah, we can send you all.
I could see the debris. I could see the debris laying around there.
Just touching on speed bumps again, there are other design options out there, small little landscape islands and chicanes and narrower lanes.
But the road is.
Free trees on the inside of the sidewalk. There's a variety of other design considerations that can slow down traffic and create an environment that is, sends signals to the driver that they need to slow down rather than do speed bumps. And so that is something for y'all to consider, maybe even broadly speaking.
Okay, thank you. I think it was Mr. Gus mentioned the boulders. Did you know those boulders were there? And what's your plan for them? There are a lot of them. I thought I was walking up on a quarry.
So those boulders, interestingly enough, if you go back through all the satellite images on either Google Earth or Hendersonville GIS, you can track those boulders back coming from Wolf Chase. And so the developer of Wolf Chase pulled all those boulders out and you can see where he pushed them up the hill. Now, sorry, let me back up and say, I am assuming this based off of satellite images and the earthwork shown. So, but yes, I'm aware of all of these boulders and we plan to use them on site. So some of our ideas and talking with grading contractors, we've got a rock buttress here. So for, it's a wall, I believe, eight feet high, the tallest. So we'll have a rock buttress used, using those stone boulders here. We were able to eliminate buttresses elsewhere based off of, they're a very large cost. But what's not a huge cost is using them as landscaping. And so the way this half moon trail kind of goes along, this whole area along Half Moon Trail was cleared when this road was put in. So the majority of this area here, you can see, I don't have black trees along the road, except this is the closest spot that it happens and it obviously could be avoided there. But all along here, there are not trees. And that's because those were taken out during construction of Half Moon Trail. And so it is, it's still, you know, we're still talking with our builder about it. But we would like to use those rocks to line this road and use them as a landscape feature.
Use them as an asset. Use them as an asset.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. So we won't, I mean, we won't be hauling them offsite. We would be using them on site and in places.
Okay, and then there's Lowry with the Times News had a question about the square footage of the home. two-story, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, lot sizes. Have they changed on the new?
Um, no, think, um, so lot sizes have changed on the new plans due to the impervious area requirement that we are now meeting. So of all of those things, um, lot size is the only change that we're looking at. And they have increased from, I would say, an average of seventy-four, and this is in exact math because I have not, I have not actually tracked everything out. But on average, I would say we're probably somewhere around, we were about seventy-four, seventy-five hundred square feet. And we are now over probably eighty-two, eighty-three hundred square feet. Um, again, I would need to actually do the math and break out on that, which I have not done yet.
So the only thing that's changed though, from the original, the lot size?
Yes, sir.
Then, um, there was some questioning on the affordability. Was it ever, was it ever tagged as affordable housing?
No, it was not. We, so I, I have classified it and, and I did in the neighborhood compatibility meeting as semi-affordable. So affordable is a very strict term. Semi-affordable is less strict. Homes are expensive to build these days. So we're trying to do it as cost efficiently as possible, but these are not affordable built homes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does anybody want to discuss any of the conditions that, that the city has recommended? Or come up with some other conditions based on our conversation here today? Other than the Silk Mountains.
One of the, one of the conditions in suggested motions to mitigate traffic by providing a right turn lane on Valentine Commons. Is that part of the traffic plan? Because I, I didn't see that in the engineers.
So that might've been in the initial, um, packet that was sent and then we sent an updated one. That was based on, uh, incorrect information from the, our consultant that reviewed it. Um, did not realize there is already.
A turn lane.
A, a right turn lane that goes all the way along Ingalls Frontage into Valentine. And then, um, so that was, that was referring to, cause I thought maybe he was talking about a right lane exiting Valentine to accommodate increased traffic, but that's right only. So it was in fact a right turn lane to get people off of sixty-four onto Valentine that, for the increased traffic, but it already exists. So pointed that out to him. He said, my mistake, my bad, totally missed it.
Okay.
Looked at it wrong or, uh, something to that effect, so. I have pulled the conditions up, uh, just for your reference, one through four and five through eight on the screen. And they're in your packet. Uh, also have a suggested motion available on the screen. Which also includes that incorrect. Uh, this include, this has nine conditions, um, with the first one, being the one you just referenced. It is still in the motion. So that would.
Not be that.
That is, um, you could leave it in there and they would have already satisfied.
Um, feel free to cut me off, okay? Robert's Rules of Order would say, I saw you nodding your head. Robert's Rules of Order would say that this might be out of line. Um, I'm not comfortable yet discussing conditions. Like you, I walked the property, uh, on Saturday. Um, I, I would love for the developer to pull this back by a month, bring it up again in November. Because based on the fluidity of the plans, what I've heard today, um, I'd love to rewalk that property and get a better sense in my gut whether or not this fits. Um, that's why I don't really feel like I'm prepared to, uh, address conditions. Again, I may be the only one here, but, uh, if the developer doesn't pull it and we go to a vote, unfortunately, I would have to vote no because I'm just not confident that this is a good fit.
Okay, well.
Thank you for listening.
Good point. I, I would like to add one comment. And there has been a lot of talk about density and where we're at and traffic through the neighborhood. So I think it's important to point out two things. And that is that the way this prod, or property is, is currently zoned, um, it is, it is zoned for up to ten units per acre. There are projects that border this property and one that is just, it is one development over that are both twelve and fifteen units per acre. There are also single-family, single-family neighborhoods that are two-point-eight and three-point-two units per acre. Ours is two-point-eight, right in line with that. So, the, the fact is that this, this property is infill property with everything. It, it matches everything else around it. Um, and so, uh, if our project doesn't go through, I really ask the neighbors to think about, you know, we're at two-point-eight and where does it go from there? It, it goes up because you then go into vertical construction, you go into multifamily housing because you won't put more single-family homes on this property. Um, it, it wouldn't make it through planning. It wouldn't meet any of the ordinances. So it would have to become more dense. So if some of the, the, the concerns are traffic, you know, that should be thought about. And, and the whole stormwater thing, Gary touched on it briefly, but it's still kind of new to me. The way they designed those systems has something to do with basing it off of the, the storm. What is it, Gary, with, um, the way we're designed is based off the smallest storm? But the way it ends up working out, we end up qualifying for a fifty-year storm tech system or a fifty-year flood. And, and so what the condition provided by planning was that we retain up to twenty-five years. Um, again, for the good of this, this neighborhood, I realize that they're in a flood zone. But we're trying to do everything that we can. And so we're actually going above and beyond the twenty-five year requirement. And our system will, will restrict and hold up to a fifty-year flood. So, the main concerns, I just wanted to bring that up.
Appreciate it. Excuse me. Thank you.
So, Lou or Matt, um, Tyler, if, if this board wanted more time to, to study the property and the changes that were brought to our attention today, how would, how would that affect?
You're, you're welcome to do that. You can, uh, uh, defer, um, defer a, a motion and defer a decision to next month.
Would it require a new presentation by city staff?
Oh, we would have a very.
Hearing.
Very abbreviated. I mean, you've already heard it all once.
What about public hearing?
It, we've closed the public hearing tonight, so we would have to reopen a public hearing again. Again, you have, uh, uh, you have the ability to set standards for the public hearing and the length of time and what's been heard. The other considerations that actually in the zoning code, it states that a material modification that's, uh, occurs within seven days of the planning board can serve as, uh, a, um, a consideration for deferral. So, and that's, whether it's a material modification or not, is kind of left up for judgment. They've actually decreased lots, increased open space. But the modifications that have occurred don't necessarily fall in line with what typically triggers, um, something being considered a major modification, which is when it intensity increases.
Right.
In this case, it's decreased. So I don't, I wouldn't necessarily make a recommendation that you, that it, oh, it, you know, they, they, they changed something, so we've got to defer it. I don't know that it necessarily crosses that line. But want to point out that if you feel that way and the board feels that way, that, yeah, you can defer even without that standard being in place. And then we also have that language that says if a material modification occurs within seven days of the planning board, you may defer it to the next month.
And this thirty-three acres in its current conditional zoning state would have how many units per acre?
Uh, zero. There is no development proposed. It was a.
It was a phase two.
Phase two, future development at a later date. No, no specific.
By right, how many, how many units could go on that property?
Ten units.
By right.
By right, and then of course with dense, with the density bonus, you could get up to eighteen.
Sure. Wow, yeah. And he's proposing two-pointed.
That's correct. Which is, uh, essentially in line with the other neighboring developments.
If we could discuss, um, Neil's proposal, how many other, just to show hands, how many other board members would want to defer it so they could look at the property again and? Anybody else? I mean, I'm not totally opposed to it, if, if, if somebody else wanted to.
I think that there's a lot of new information presented that in the, in the spot of the moment, to make a decision, this moment, I, I, I prefer to defer.
Okay, so that's two. Anybody else?
I guess I would support the deferment. I, I just didn't feel comfortable about the thirty percent, uh, slope rule. And, and the fact that it was stated that wasn't sure how many of the lots are now, it on the, um, more intense slope. But I think that, that should be something we, we should have an answer. Like, like, are we appro, are we approving something that's not to the, the.
So.
Recommendation.
Let me, let me say one thing and I'll let you answer that question. Want to clarify. We talked about the variance related to steep slopes, that they would need a variance because of minimum, uh, lot size and maximum impervious surface coverage. What they have proposed would satisfy that, according to the developer, satisfies that so that they don't need a variance. So that's subdivision ordinance variance not necessary. Then there is condition number seven, as, on here, in your suggested motion, it would be, uh, it would have been listed as number eight. This is that staff is recommending a condition that no development occur on areas that currently have a slope that's greater than thirty percent.
But does the site plan currently show that though?
There, for, the site plan they've provided does show, so that's correct. They are not satisfying that condition. What they have done instead is said, we'll, we will do basement lots, basement homes on these lots, thereby reducing our grading footprint and minimizing the impact of grading. Right, and, and still build on lots that have thirty percent greater. The impact is not as great. The cost of development goes up, the impact is less. It is still building on sites that have over thirty percent.
I guess what I'm saying is, would the deferment then give them time to correct the site plan to show exactly?
So, we should clarify also, the thirty percent is a comprehensive plan recommendation. So it's not a subdivision or zoning, uh, ordinance requirement. And so the developer has every right to not agree to that condition. And it was a staff-proposed condition based on the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan does specifically call out the thirty percent steep slope. The developer has, you know, worked to remove the variance and I'll let him speak to the other elements to this. But the thirty percent is not a requirement that he has to adjust the plan to address.
Tyler, please pull up one of the maps, any of the latest. So the, the area shown in, I, I am clear with how many are on those areas shown in green. Um, but since it is not a requirement, uh, that I not build in those areas, I worked with planning to find a solution that was, that worked with what the ordinance was going towards. And that was leaving more open space. And so what I did outside of that is there were areas that are outside or that are less than thirty percent grade that I am now not, not grading, disturbing or touching. Um, because it is not possible to get all of these lots out of that thirty percent grade. It just is not. And so we're, we're trying to find a middle ground with planning, um, by leaving this larger open area so that it is now more a main focal point of this neighborhood, rather than just staying outside of thirty percent slopes.
So seven lots, is it about seven?
It's, yeah, about, about six or seven, yes.
So we're not going to see a site plan revision with the recommended conditions if we, if we vote today. We just vote today based on.
If we, if we agree on conditions and we have a proposal, a motion in a second, and we have agreed on conditions with the developer, then city staff would work with the developer to make sure those conditions are met. With, that would be our recommendation to city council. City council has the final say-so on any of these conditions. But traditionally, if the developers agreed to the conditions, it's usually not an issue.
Well, or the fee in lieu of, so is there, is that a, is that on the table or be in lieu of any of the conditions that are presented?
The fee in lieu of is generally only on sidewalks. Is that, is that what you're talking about? And I don't, I don't see any need to put.
Well, there's already a sidewalk, a changes discussion for sidewalks from pervious to impervious. So right now, we, we don't know what sidewalks look like. We don't know. Um, there's a lot of moving parts that haven't been confirmed that are outside of this recommended condition.
So, I, I didn't catch all of that, but I will say that, um, this is a preliminary site plan. And so, uh, the whether it's zoning compliant, uh, and whether the intensity, the proposed intensity development, the impacts of development and the compatibility and, um, with the surrounding land uses, all of those things are what's considered. We do have the standards I can pull up, uh, for what does go into considering a zoning map amendment. Um, those are really kind of the big questions and things like the design of the sidewalk and, and maybe utility connections and, uh, the specific location of the storm tech systems. I mean, at this, at this level, you guys need to make sure that you know they're going to have some stormwater management that's going to hit a certain level. Where it goes on the site is a little bit more of a final site plan type of information. The developer does, is not required to, and there's a reason for that, um, to have that type of, that level of information at this point. They are not going to make the investment to get to that detail until they have the entitlements from the city to actually pursue the development. So that's why it's broken in from preliminary site plan, concept plan, neighborhood compatibility meeting, preliminary site plan, planning board, city council, and then final site plan after they've gotten the basic entitlements in place. Hope that helps.
That makes sense.
Those, um, those standards are on the screen.
You can see around town where development happens in theory, but in actuality, that's, um, you know, Publix, for example, the flooding there and just various things that seemed good in the planning process. But then when it's implemented, it has a little bit different of an effect. So, obviously, you're not going to make the investment to get to that point of planning at this, at this point. But this is what all of these people are here for, because they're the ones that are impacted after. So, it's just to get merit's asking the question.
So is it?
So it sounds like.
Questions about the proposed conditions? Is that the?
We're discussing perhaps some proposed additions if somebody wants to make a motion, but it sounds like, h- how would another month affect? The developer?
Um, so, we really, uh, have appreciated working with planning. Um, they've given great feedback. The community and Wolf Chase, while I understand they don't like the project, um, most people have been very kind and, and, you know, we've tried to take their feedback and, and talk with them. And so, um, we're at a point where, and I know, no one likes to hear about the developer's cost. They just want to say, that's your business and that's your deal. And I understand. Um, but there is, there is a point in time where the project no longer comes, uh, uh, you can no longer do it. And so, if w- we really do want to work with planning, we want to leave as much green space as we can. Um, so I, I guess to answer your question, what would change? You guys would have more time to think about it. Um, I would tighten up the plans and there wouldn't be changes, you know, again, between now and then. But without clear direction as it is to, to what you want or, or conditions that you want, uh, I, I think I would just clean up the plan, for lack of better words, and, and leave it the way it is.
So, uh, and I'll just add that the, um, the, the site plan that you guys received a week ago, uh, the time spent on the land. Just want to make sure that it's understood what changes that are being presented tonight, what those are, so that you can kind of visualize, okay? This is my understanding of the lay of the land. This is my understanding where lots are going to be, where streets are going to be. This is where trees were going to be saved. This is where trees were going to be removed. And then what alternative has been proposed tonight through their presentation? To make sure that's understood, as you start to think about, you know, do we have the information we need to be able to make a decision? Um, and just kind of considering the modifications, uh, that have been proposed. Again, typically a modification that, oh, we, uh, we found room for ten more lots. And so we're bringing that to you. That would probably be a more likely scenario for a major modification that would require a deferral. In this case, they're down, down almost twelve lots, I guess, from where they started. Um, and, and down to less lots than what, um, was originally proposed, or what would came it to you in your packet. So when you're kind of, uh, analyzing whether deferral is, uh, appropriate or not, those are things that probably should be considered. So just, uh, just think about as you're, as you're. kind of move forward with your thoughts.
So Neil, you were the one.
One more question with the tree board. Can you kind of summarize the, you know, it it sounded like they had some objections and then the developer proposed some mitigation and and so could you say at this point with what was mitigated that they're satisfied or they're fully against?
So it's so my my not, I can't speak for the tree board. But the concerns that I heard as it relates to comprehensive plan as it relates to the site plan that they were showing at that time. They have greatly improved the development. Whether it is appropriate, fully, you know, the ideal development for this site, not saying that. I'm saying what they had versus what they have now is vastly improved. And primarily because it does improve this potential habitat area here. It it widens it, it leaves it intact up here at the top of the knob. That is now no lots. And you actually have the ability to leave a migration corridor from this kind of interesting environmentally sensitive area here and here. You've got, you know, the creek not far away. You're going to have this intact woodland that is now going to be enhanced. And by not having any breaks in that, I I personally think that that's improved the site along with kind of the basic things of fifty more trees have been preserved. Some of those things are, but as far as the intact habitat. Is it still going to be detrimental to the environment and the habitat?
Yes, I guess that's what I'm I'm getting to is that one of the deferment things was do we feel it's environmentally you know, challenging for the site? And that's the part that I think that Neil is referring to when he's saying walk it and.
So I will say that, you know, at this point, Hendersonville, you know, one hundred and seventy five year anniversary coming up. Land that's remaining to be developed and the market demand for, you know, the potential for profit to be made, the strong real estate market and the demand for housing, the need for housing, all those factors coming together. You guys are going to have very difficult decisions when it relates to the environmental impact of development. There are trade offs for development. I think someone had mentioned tonight, you know, take this out to the county, take this out. So then we've got farmland preservation. We have orchards there. We are then creating even more traffic for the people have to drive further. All those things are kind of these considerations. If you look at your comprehensive plan, you'll see a lot of that information. For those of you who've been around for a while, you understand those kind of planning principles. And so.
There is city water and city sewer here.
Existing infrastructure. Tree canopy will be lost, but what are the other things? What are the other environmental impacts of not approving development within closer proximity to our existing infrastructure? So you want to shed some light on that.
Bob has a question.
Yeah, I I wasn't, I'm not clear on the on the tree board, their recommendation. One question would be, do they give a specific recommendation that that's some impact? And also, I'm not sure what their recommendation is. It seems like something has happened along the way, but I don't know where they are. It's not clear to me where the tree board is relative to this project. Because aside from things that I think have been covered, I'm uncomfortable with the 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 tree issues would seem to be strong as well.
Yeah, so I mean, it is a a fully wooded site. And so given that and the amount of development, especially the early iterations of the plan, the tree board took a little different stance than normal. They, instead of just saying, here's the conditions, hey, will you replant? You know, double what you took out or a larger calipfer tree or whatever their kind of typical conditions have been. They made a statement on the it essentially being incompatible with the natural and environmental resources chapter, several of the goals of the natural environmental resources chapter of the comprehensive plan. So instead of just here's some conditions, they said, you know, kind of a oppositional statement to the development. And then they also added some conditions to say, and you know, if if it moves forward, then at least protect the trees, plant native plant, plant native species. That type of thing, that helps.
So so I'd like to just comment sort of on the process a little bit here, too. The tree board is authorized to make a recommendation to city council as a part of the conditional zoning district process. That happens prior to your meeting. And so we make you aware of what that tree board recommendation is. Your role is not necessarily to interpret the tree board's recommendation. That recommendation is really for city council. Your role as the planning board is to a a review the project based on the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance and staff review. You can certainly consider what tree board has said, but to think then about making a recommendation to city council about approval or not of a project based on how well it it goes along with the comprehensive plan and the the zoning ordinance. So I think important to, you know, have the tree board's recommendation as part of your review. That's why we included in the staff report. But also important to note that you're an independent body making a recommendation to city council and city council receives both of those recommendations and considers them individually, I think.
Any other question? So based on what you heard, Neil, since you mentioned deferring primarily.
Yes.
Traditionally, it's because of changes that are either increasing density or something. Do you do you still feel like you you need more time?
I feel as if I do, yes. I may be the only one here, but I do feel as if I do.
I think Andy.
I'm good to go. I think I'm a good good to go today.
So.
So one thing I'll offer up, if we've been at this for two hours and almost two hours and forty five minutes for this one item, we have another item.
I know.
If we're going to move forward tonight and we're going to go through the merits of each condition and and side on those, I would suggest that we move to the other item and come back to finish the deliberation.
Yeah, I feel bad about changing the agenda now. Sorry, whoever's in the room for the world of clothing proposing.
So if you can get a sense of things maybe on that and then maybe make it.
Yeah.
Able it.
Hon- honestly, we would have to go through each condition.
I am here dressed almost everything.
It sounds like there's not going to be a whole lot of tweaking on the conditions.
I don't think so, yeah.
So it'd be number seven and number five seem to have a little bit of lack of resolution.
I I would again point out recognizing that you all are making recommendations on the conditions and that the developer has to agree with the conditions to city council. Recommending these conditions, if you're in agreement with them, is your way of saying, council, this is what you need to pay attention to.
And the developer will have to make an will have to agree at that point. They don't necessarily have to agree tonight.
But it doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt, but so for instance, the developer says what's the number three, I think? Silt fencing. So if you don't feel comfortable with the silt fencing, you can continue to recommend the original condition that the tree board had made, support the tree board's recommended condition. You don't have to change it to what the developers agreed to. We'll leave that up to the city council to decide and and the developer and city council to work out. So if you feel strongly about one of the positions, you don't have to decide tonight to take the developers counter condition. You're just passing along the city council what you feel strongly about as it relates to potential modifications to the development.
Okay. So do we do we have a motion then? With condition? You want to take a stab at it?
I could read it, but can't read it. Longer and longer.
Okay, Peter's Peter's.
So number number one. Okay, number one is gone. Okay, I move the planning. I move the planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance, amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, pin number nine, five, six, eight, dash, zero, zero, dash, fourteen, forty six from PRD dash CD CZD planned residential development dash conditional zoning district to PRD dash CZ planned residential development. Additional zoning district. Based on the site plan submitted by the applicant and subject to the following permitted uses shall include. Said one is not there. One residential dwelling, single family, okay. Conditions that shall be satisfied prior to final site plan approval include. One is not there, right? Number two, size the stormwater systems to retain runoff for at a minimum fifty year event stormwater administrator.
Correction, sorry.
It's twenty five.
Yep.
That has been produced by staff to twenty five years.
Okay. Of twenty five is fine. Twenty five year events, stormwater administrator and and three, utilize low impact development practices in our dash three point two.
So we've got several updates here that did not make it into the presentation. I apologize.
Like we just started. I do, but it's not, doesn't have that in it at all.
It should on the, I went through the whole thing.
She doesn't have it either. You can notes always.
So we.
I don't have.
And these are your proposals, your proposed.
We were looking at proposed conditions.
It's in the presentation. So you've got the first part of the motion correct. Okay, pick it up where? And so you can refer to the conditions that were in the presentation were the most. These conditions here.
So you are on, you've got twenty five here.
It downsides it one notch. Just a little smaller. But start staff recommended conditions. Number one, size the stormwater systems to retain runoff for a minimum of twenty five year event stormwater administrator. Semi colon and two, utilize low impact development practices, do incorporation of previous concrete for sidewalks and pervy, I'm sorry, pervious.
And we're going to take sidewalks out of that.
Correct. Incorporation of pervious concrete for driveways, stormwater administrator. And three, protect the trees that have been proposed to be preserved in accordance with section fifteen dash four of the zoning ordinance from the tree board. Developer. Four, four, all new vegetation planted must be chosen from the recommended landscape species list for street trees and land development projects from the tree board. Number five, recess garages or shift parking to rear of lots. Make front porch the primary architectural feature fronting the street. That's PH dash three point one point one. And developer proposed condition. Okay, pedestrian crossing at road C does not appear to have sufficient sight distance. Provide pedestrian crossing to mailbox cluster slash school bus stop. And seven, reduce the impact of the development and preserve quality undisturbed open space by clustering development in areas outside of thirty degree slope. That's NR dash one point four. NR dash two point one, thus preserving existing woodlands and avoiding grading of steep slopes in these areas, NR dash two point three. Number eight. Eight still there?
Is that that one?
Provide right of way can right of way connection to Gypsy Lane to accommodate pedestrian connection. That's TC dash one point four point one. Utility connections per city code. This condition is subject to change based on potential impact previous condition, condition number seven.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map and that rezoning is reasonable and in public interest for the following reasons. Location is proposed plant, a proposed planned residential development is in keeping with the surrounding land uses. Single family detached is a primary use stated in the land use and development chapter, chapter eight dash LU dash six point two. And three, the proposed density of the development, three point oh units, that's less, right?
I think it got reduced to two point eight.
Two point eight, two point eight units per acre is in line with the use, land use and development chapters guidance of two to eight units per acre, chapter nine dash LU six point four.
Okay, so we have a motion with eight conditions. Do we have a second? We have a second. Do we have any discussion? I I've, so first of all, we're not taking into consideration what the developer had recommended about the tree board and the silt fences. Is that something that they would have be able to?
We can have that condition again with the city council. I'm not fully opposed, but I I would like to bring up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question?
My question was to the developer, was it something that they could agree to?
Oh, yeah, he's not going to agree on it tonight. At city council.
And then the other, the other condition was the the recess garages on the majority and and the
That was there.
The proposal is done, done saying about majority. It just says this is the recess garages.
The condition is that they will all.
They will all be, that's what I'm saying. Or in this, in this proposal, in this motion with the conditions, they will all be. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I I would like to propose another condition to the motion and that is that the developer should work with city staff to design a a nature trail or hiking trail that has the ability for connectivity to the other neighborhoods. You know, I can reference our our comprehensive plan. Green infrastructure systems help protect and restore naturally functioning ecosystems. An opportunity for, you know, folks to be fit, improve health, property values. You know, having an opportunity to walk up and see that view I think would be a big benefit for the entire community. Is that something?
It's fine for me.
Okay. Is there a way we can?
Friendly amendment to the motion has been granted by the person who made the motion.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Okay. Um, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion. We have a seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, one opposed.
The motion passes one, two, three, six to one. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to take five minutes before we hear the next one and I'm, I apologize to the folks that are waiting for that. Let's take five minutes and we'll get back here six fifty three, six fifty three. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Oh, you know, okay. Oh, I did get that, yes. Yeah, I did, yeah, I did.
I think they gave it to us. Oh, okay. Okay.
Interesting.
Thank you, sir.
Guess I work.
Right, right, right.
And yeah. It is, I feel bad about the trees. My legs are losing their feeling. Thank you for being here, though, hearing about it.
Much appreciated.
New projects this last time?
Yeah, we are so busy, we're just knocking it out and so Mills River. Well, we're not even there yet. That's why we we're looking at our site across the street from where the diner is there. Where is that two eighty four? And and well, I don't, I don't know the details of it yet because they just hired us last week, but I think what we want to do is like be able to interconnect that, you know, that that intersection. I think what we want to do is like be able to interconnect that, you know, that, that intersection, so that it becomes like a. Like a little, like a city center kind of hub, you know, where they can have. Have like a access street. So they'd have like a little downtown, you know, a little city area where people can hang out for some time, so some outside spaces and things, you know.
Have you seen Western North Carolina Magazine?
Yes.
See the story about the lake?
Check that out.
You know how those river floods on it?
I agree.
I thought, well, that's indicating that maybe they did do the lake.
Okay.
All of the fun.
That's what drove home to me that we have all this money, maybe that lake was fixed.
Yeah.
It's cold outside.
We do this at work with the computers. This, this one should go.
Oh, I'll see what I can.
I just, I don't know, I think we need to get some better rules about these housing projects that we, that we can better defend, you know what I mean? Because we're in a situation where we're not.
Sure.
Go by the ordinance.
Exactly.
No, ten, two to ten, two to ten, but you could get a, you could get a bonus for keeping a certain amount of, there's some kind of a bonus you can get for keeping green spaces. Get up, you can get up to eighteen.
You know, I don't know whether there's like.
It's two to ten.
Yes. Yes. Two to ten is the current zone. And it was, it was, it was supposed to be phase two of Valentine Commons.
Right, right, right.
I don't know what Valentine Commons is, but I bet it's.
That's about it.
Yeah, they're three story apartments. Based on neighborhood compound. Right. And he's protecting the ridgeline, putting in a stormwater system that.
How are you?
I don't feel like I live in the mountains. Yeah.
That.
Especially if you have trails or ridge or mountain, where you're looking out at. Okay, it is six fifty two. Go ahead and get started again.
Keep up the good work, Bill.
I'll, uh, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. I will apologize to the folks that are here for the world of clothing. Those development, um, about the time it took to get through that, and you were first on the agenda, we should have just, that's my bad, I should have let you do that. You're afraid.
All right. Good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, members of planning board. The city is receipt of a, or application for conditional rezoning from Canvas Capital as the applicant and streams Dominion Incorporated as the property owners. So as you can see, it encompasses two pens, nine, five, wow, I won't read through those, you can see them. Um, the existing property is on C three highway business. The developers proposing to be rezoned to C three C Z D, which is highway business conditional zoning district. Both of the pens total eight point two four acres. Uh, the developers proposing have many warehouses and all other permitted uses in the C three district. Um, incorporated in this conditional zoning district. And the project details is that the um project will have twelve hundred interior um storage units maximum. I'll, I'll go through the, the reasons why this is coming before you today, so. This project requires conditional rezoning due to the size of the development. Our ordinance states that development or redevelopment involving more than fifty thousand square feet of floor area. Requires a conditional zoning district. Since the property is currently zoned C three. Um, if it had not triggered the size requirement, the fifty thousand square feet. The applicant could have applied for a special use permit through our board of adjustment and kept their underlying zoning. So C three does have many warehouses as a special use, but due to the size of the buildings, it automatically threw it into a conditional zoning district. Uh, much like the last meet or class out on this, um, item also had required a. Neighbor compatibility meeting that was held on the same day of September first. Some of the topics that were discussed were the ownership of the actual property, storage units on the front side of the property, RV and camper storage. And if there was a need for another storage facility in Hendersonville. Current zoning, as you can see parcels to the north are on C three highway business and C two secondary business. It contain commercial uses such as the Best Western Hendersonville and El Paso Mexican restaurant. Parcels to the east are on C three and P C D, which is planned commercial development and include the Ramada Inn and Hampton Inn. Parcels to the south are on C three highway business and C H M U, commercial highway mixed use and contain Cascades Mountain Resort. Parcels to the west are on C three highway business and contain Interstate twenty six. As you can see, there's not too much difference between the, the current zoning and the proposed zoning. It's basically just going from the standard C three to a conditional zoning district within the C three district. This is the future land use map from the city of Hendersonville's comprehensive, for the comprehensive plan. The subject property is designated as regional activity center. The twenty thirty comprehensive plans future land use map designates parcels to the north, south and east as regional activity center. The area to the west is, is not designated since it includes Interstate twenty six. Other parcels to the east are classified as high intensity neighborhood and business center. So regional activity center, definition is to meet the large scale retail needs of Hendersonville residents while encouraging mixed use. Walkable design through redevelopment in field projects. The growth management um section of our, or our comp comprehensive plan designates this as a priority infill area. And it is not included in an activity node. You will note that many warehouses is not a primary recommended land use or a secondary recommended land use. However, many warehouses are not uh recommended land use anywhere in our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan also says that these are not an exhaustive, exhaustive list of what is um adequate or should be put in these areas. This is just a sample. So, chapter eight of our comprehensive plan. Encourage infill development usually utilizing existing infrastructure in order to maximize public investment and revitalize existing neighborhoods. So as you're probably thinking, well, this isn't an infill development. It is a redevelopment and it basically falls under this strategy that is listed the same section, which is encourage infill development and redevelopment areas planned for high intensity development. As indicated by the priority infill areas. So this area is not only a regional activity center designation, which is a high intensity commercial designation. On the future land use map, it goes a little bit farther and is considered a priority infill area. On the growth management maps, that's kind of how it fits in to our comprehensive plan. And like I mentioned. Kind of, this use isn't specifically stated as a recommended use in our comprehensive plan, so it's kind of hard. To fit that use in sometimes, and also since this is a redevelopment and not new development. That kind of also throws a thing or a kind of a wrench into things. But this, I think that points out a good um way of how it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. So these are some existing site photos. The top left corner shows basically looking straight towards the existing world of clothing building. The middle top shows the southern, I believe, yes, southern. Section of the building looking north, and then the one on the top right is the north section of the building. Bottom left is the other building that is currently on the site. It, um, I think there may be some many storage or use for offices already in that building. So that building is also included in this rezoning. And also this middle bottom is of a vacant field that is included in the rezoning. There's not proposed to be any utilization of this area. It's not going to be used for parking, open space, um, new buildings, nothing like that. They're proposing to include it in the rezoning. But they're not proposing any uses or tied to the larger development in case they want to redevelopment that, redevelop that area in the future. And also. Um, this alley is, there's, I will mention encroachment later on, so the encroachment on this top. Corner of the building, that's, um, that's this alley that it's encroached on, and it's actually not maintained by DOT. It's what they call an abandoned alley. I don't believe it's wholly closed, but it is abandoned by DOT's maintenance, so they do not maintain it. Map to clicks, I think, yeah, once you click, I think it may throw it off. There we go. So we'll go through the site plan. The buildings, I'm gonna go through the buildings and basically they're square footages, so the world of clothing building itself is one thousand nine hundred thirty six square feet. The office building that also has some mini storage in the front is, has a footprint of five thousand two hundred forty nine square feet. The new canopies that are being proposed, the RV covered parking is going to be a total of forty eight thousand two hundred square feet. Which brings an overall site square footage to a hundred and fifty four thousand three hundred eighty five square feet. Like I mentioned, the canopy structures, they're showing four canopy structures. There was a picture of that in your um staff report. So the units, they're showing on the site plan that there's going to be interior mini storage that are twelve hundred units maximum. And the. Exterior canopy storage will be seventy three slots. Development meets the ten per, um, ten percent required open space requirements. The applicant is not proposing to move any existing mature tree over twelve inches in diameter on the site. The zoning ordinance requires that many warehouses have a minimum of one space for two employees and a maximum, that maximum employment. And one space for twenty rental units, so they're required to have sixty one spaces, they're providing sixty four spaces. And like I mentioned earlier, there's a vacant piece of land. On the northeastern portion of the property, the applicant is not using the, this area for open space, parking, access. The applicant wants to leave this area unattached to the requirements of this development, so it could potentially be developed in the future. It will still be connected to this C Z D and would have to come back as amendment if any new development occurs on that spot.
Let's go to the next slide.
So like I mentioned earlier, there is an existing encroachment. The picture on the left shows you what that encroachment is. It shows the fifteen foot setback line. The edge of the current building and the edge of the property line. So as you can see, there is a corner of the building that goes over the property line. Um, into that alley that was shown, so. Let's see. Our ordinance would consider this a non-conforming structure. A non-conforming structure may undergo a change of use or renovation without having to bring the structure into conformity. With the requirements of these regulations, provided that the change of use or renovation does not increase the floor area of the structure, which that will not occur. The change in use is to a permitted use within the district. If this is permitted and the rezoning passes, many warehouses would be a permitted use in this district. Uh, the number of parking spaces provided for this use is conformity with the requirements of these regulations. It also meets that, so that's just a quick note. Um. The developer has spoke about trying to correct that non-conformity and that, that encroachment for. I think for finance reasons, he can probably speak on to that a little bit more, but. I just want to point out that it does exist in its current state. So the proposed site plan was reviewed by our development review committee. The proposed site plan is generally compliant with its zoning code. And like I've mentioned, the proposed use slash site plan are generally supported by the comprehensive plan. So there was a developer proposed condition. Uh, the developer proposed that the developer will provide two twelve foot wide travel lanes and a ten foot wide parking lane where possible. As described in section sixteen dash four dash sixteen of the zoning ordinance at the building located at one thirty five Sugarloaf Road. However, the travel lane width and parking lane requirements may not be implemented everywhere based on existing conditions. So you're probably wondering, what does that mean? Why is that in there? So with. Many warehouses, we have the normal zoning codes, but we also have things called supplementary standards. Which are for certain uses, they have additional standards that have to be met for those particular uses. Just so happens that many warehouses are one of those uses that have that, and. Basically, section sixteen dash four dash sixteen that's mentioned. States that one-way interior travel lane shall have a minimum of fifteen feet in addition to a ten-foot wide parking lane. All two-way interior lanes serving storage units shall have two twelve-foot wide travel lanes and be. Provided with a ten-foot wide parking lane. All portions of the site shall be readily accessible by police and fire equipment and personnel. So the reason the applicant is proposing this condition is because the site is already existing. It's already existing as a two-way travel with existing parking. So you would have to possibly reconfigure the site in order to meet this condition or to meet that section of the ordinance. That was the thought behind that. Upper proposed condition. This, um, C staff does not have any recommended conditions for this project. Uh, the tree board had a recommended condition of to require a type B buffer along the rear of the property line adjacent to I twenty six. Um, the right of way preferably evergreen trees selected from the recommended three species list. I believe the developer has looked into this and he'll probably be able to speak on this a little bit better than I can, but um, he's looked into the feasibility of. Um, doing that recommended condition. We did, um. Get one pre-submitted public comment. It was from the Best Western Hendersonville. It says Best Western Hendersonville objects to the proposal as shown on the drawing. There should be a significant setback from the driveway that separates this property and the Best Western property. The setbacks should apply to buildings and fences. Thanks for making our objections known. That's all I have for today. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What's a B type buffer?
So a type B buffer is the buffer that's used whenever a commercial. Business abuts a residential use. That's the buffer that's, um, I think it's. Off the top of my head, four trees for every hundred feet and I think twenty five flowering shrubs and thirty three evergreen shrubs.
Yeah, it sounds vaguely familiar.
Could you do me a favor and just go back to the map? That and um with the pic, oh, wait a minute.
This?
No, no, the picture and show me where they want the buffer.
Okay, so I actually don't have that on here. It's, let me point.
Ramp there?
Yeah, all across the back you can see from.
No, wouldn't it be on the right side where the grassy strip is?
Between best western. Isn't that the Ramada Inn over here?
This is the Best Western. The tree board wants the buffer on back here. They were basically, their main concern is where it says world of clothing in the back. They said that was an eyesore and they thought that this buffer would better aid. To serve as a visual buffer between the building and.
And the ramp.
And the ramp, basically. They didn't want people, that'd be the first thing they saw.
I assume they're gonna paint the damn building.
That's what it said, they're gonna paint over.
Let me, oh, can we ask?
Questions of city staff, yes.
Questions of city staff, okay. I know that. Two commercial properties that abut one another do not have to have a buffer. But. The people at the hotel are gonna be staring at. Mini storage and. mini storage and how high are the proposed, uh, RV things?
RV canopies? I don't remember off the top of my head how tall those were.
We can ask the developer that after their presentation.
Is there any possibility that we could do or consider a condition of putting a buffer in there?
Yeah, so I mean, you could recommend a condition that, like, like has been mentioned, the developer would ultimately have to agree to it at city council. Built, this site's a little bit different than most, um, because usually you can kind of mold the site the way that you want to have it look. Most of this pavement, I mean, all this pavement is already existing. So you'd be tearing up pavement and kind of tearing up the current access points and like flow of traffic, um, to potentially do that. But I mean, that's definitely an option that y'all can recommend.
All that pavement's going to be torn.
No, I think they're mostly going to resurface.
And with the alleyway, who's responsible to maintain them?
That's a good question. So I think it was originally a DOT alley and I think they abandoned the maintenance of it back in the eighties. So it's right now a private alley, which is not too unheard of. A lot of these alleys are private. So I think maintenance, I'm not real sure. I think that may come down to a legal question of who actually is responsible for maintenance, but it's not the city. Um,
Nobody anymore, nobody anymore.
I mean, nobody owns it. It looks like crap.
Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, so technically nobody owns it right now. It's, it's still a right-of-way. So I mean, it's still, it appears to be still an open right-of-way, judging by GIS, but that's not a hundred percent accurate.
I don't understand the issue. Yeah. Issue with the hotel, what's their objection to it?
So they were just saying that they would like to see the, well, they wanted to see the buildings farther away from them. But the buildings are existing and the canopies that are being proposed meet the setback requirements.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet. So they meet the setback requirements. And technically fences, unless they're over nine feet, don't have to meet setback requirements. And if they are over nine feet, then they have to meet the setback. But I, I don't, I think their fences are also meeting setbacks as well. So I think their fence is right there and the setback line is that dash line.
You could go to the photograph of that, aerial view?
Yeah.
So they, they would want, well, I mean, it seems like they should have put one in themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's been there for.
Decades.
There is a green strip along the alleyway.
Yeah, okay.
And I had a question. Um, the encroachment issue, how are they planning on resolving that?
So that would probably be a good question.
Okay.
And in the proposal, it said, um, in lieu of sidewalks, are there sidewalks there now?
There is currently not a sidewalk. So they would be required to have a sidewalk from this section all the way over to their property line, I think somewhere around over here. There is some drainage, stormwater stuff that's in this area, which may make it tough. So by ordinance, they're required to put the sidewalk in if they decide that it's going to be, there's a hardship there and they can't put the sidewalk in. The city manager can grant a fee in lieu. So they're basically paying for the sidewalk without putting it in. So I don't think they found, I don't think they've gotten to the design point where they're, they're like, we can put a sidewalk in or we can't. One is required, so they're either going to have to put it in or pay the fee in lieu.
And the, the money goes toward future sidewalks in the city.
Correct.
Yes, perhaps maybe make more stands or more fees.
Just to, clarification on fee and lieu, um, currently all fee and lieu payments go into the general fund. There is not a dedicated sidewalk.
Oh, I, I misunderstood.
That is, that is an important topic for staff that is being explored all the way up to the city manager level.
I thought it went into a sidewalk fund. That's my.
Okay.
We, we agree that would be good, uh, but just want to make sure that you guys understood that that is currently not.
Okay. Any other questions for city staff? I, I do have one about, so in other words, usually when we have a conditional zoning in front of us, there's not that, that little caveat that says, and all other uses within the C three district. My question goes to that empty spot.
Um, grass?
The grassy area like that.
They have to come.
Grassing. Is that already C three? Or are we rezoning it to something different?
So, yeah, so that parcel, the entire parcel, it's included parcel.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, but, but what's the currently zone?
It's currently zone C three. So they technically could use it for anything.
I just wanted to make sure that, that something wasn't.
Yeah, they're not.
Rezone without us.
Correct.
Realizing, okay. And then the, okay, the vacant field. I three buffer. How, how far off are they from that twenty-foot condition that you mentioned for the, for the two-way traffic? Is it, is it like a foot or two or is it?
Well, it's, it depends on where you're at. So they've got twenty-one feet there and nineteen over here. But it also states that they should have a, um, ten-foot wide. So I guess they could technically take out a row of parking or something to make that the right, ten-foot wide parking thing. So I think it's pretty close on most of it.
Are those interior units in that one?
Yes.
I don't know that the ten-foot would be required because they're interior units.
So it, it, it does state that there, it's, it doesn't differentiate between exterior and interior. It just states.
It seems like a lot of, you know, U-Hauls and things like that are pulling in and out of it. Very little traffic in there. Storage room, right?
Yeah. Last thing, um, as new owners, do they have to comply with any ADA changes?
You mean? I'm honestly not sure. It's mostly dealt with the building code levels.
Yeah, that would be building code. So they'll have to comply with all building code when they do their outfit, but that's not, um, we don't trigger that review.
The, um, things that could trigger that are change of use, which may be something that's happening here. Also, the, the, um, fire code is requiring that they sprinkle the building. So there are things like that that the developer's aware of that are being triggered based on their new use.
Have any more questions for staff? We'll, um, allow the developer to come up and speak. But they have planned.
Good evening. Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, members of the planning board. My name is Daniel Rinkins. I'm with Canvas Capital, here with my colleague John Goodell. Canvas Capital, we're out of Charlotte. Um, I'll go through a quick presentation and I did take notes of all of your questions that I think we can try to help answer. So I'll hit those after the brief presentation and try to make it brief. I know you guys had a long night. So Tyler went over a lot of the specifics of the property. This is just a quick kind of, you know, what this facility will look like on the inside after from another one of our, um, conversion projects that we've done. Do I have access to? Okay. Okay. Um, so yeah, Tyler mentioned all this, but we're sticking with the C three zoning. The thing I will emphasize here is that it's a, it's a permitted use by right today. It's just the size of the building requires us to go through the conditional zoning. So a little bit about us, Safe Nest Storage is our brand. We have three other Asheville, MSA locations. The closest one to here is in Hendersonville off of Naples Road, just up by twenty-six. We've been in this market for about three years. We love Hendersonville. We think it's a growing market. We also, unlike a lot of other real estate developers, take a long-term approach to our, to our properties. Um, meaning we're, we're likely going to take a little better care of it than somebody who's going to come in and just kind of, you know, flip it and leave. We have over twenty-five employees. We're, we're mostly based in North and South Carolina. So, yeah, I mean, things I guess Tyler didn't mention here, as many of you, if not all of you know, this used to be the world of clothing. During the pandemic, they, they shuttered and closed their doors in April of this year. Um, and they have been in business since the eighties. This is just a snapshot of all, um, not all, but a lot of the household name brands of retailers that have closed their doors in the past three years. The purpose of this slide is to just emphasize to all of you that this is creating a lot of vacant retail space that I'm sure you've probably seen driving throughout different areas of town. And there are really only a few uses that can really absorb some of these big box, uh, type, type buildings. Um, self-storage being one of them. Um, as you guys a- all are aware, actually, I think last Thursday, one, uh, was approved. There's residential development happening in and around this site, um, in and around Hendersonville, which is great. And as more rooftops and, and homes come into, uh, come into Hendersonville, the need for self-storage grows. As of twenty twenty, almost eleven percent of all households rented a self-storage unit. So just in summary, um, you know, as Tyler mentioned, we meet the comprehensive plan with this use. We were meeting an, an increasing need of the public of, of self-storage. The facilities nearby, not only this property, but our, our facility a little north of here are over ninety percent occupied. Some of them have waiting, have long waiting lists. And, and most importantly, we're going to approve the aesthetics of this property, which I'll go into some of the, you know, specifics there. But, you know, all in all, from really all four sides of this property, it will be greatly improved from what it is today. So that is the presentation. And I, I took some notes down, so I'll, I will happily go through some of the questions that we had comments on, um, and then address some of the.
Why don't you do that first and then we'll, we'll come up with any other questions?
Okay. Yeah, great. So just to mention some of the, some of the items that came up in the community meeting were security, landscaping. Um, well, tho- those were the main two, actually. Security and landscaping and security. We added fences, gates to this plan to kind of enclose off, um, those RV spaces. It's kind of tough to do the way the site's situated, but the plan that was submitted today shows a much more enhanced and, uh, robust, you know, security layout. Plus, we will be putting new cameras on the buildings, which if you've ever driven by here, there's actually some vagrant activity in the area and hopefully this will help mitigate some of that. Um, landscaping, we added a lot of trees. We are not removing any trees, which is something that a lot of developers can say, but this is also a big parking lot. Um, but we are adding a lot of plantings, a lot of landscape plantings. And in, you know, that directly actually ties to the hotel comment of, you know, wanting to kind of buffer those, those canopies. We, we are, we are showing vehicular use landscaping, which we can flip back to the site plan and look at. Regarding the tree board recommendation, we have, if you go back, if you actually pause right here. So let me. Okay, tree board wants a buffer here. This is the fence for I twenty-six. This dark line is our property line. We actually, although this is a big grassed area, we actually don't own, but only a twenty-foot strip right here in front of our building. And this is our transformer, which goes all the way to the property line. Uh, meaning our electrical runs all the way back here uh, from the poles over here. And then we also have a stormwater pipe that this is the low, this property line is the low part of this grassed area and there's a shallow stormwater pipe running right through the middle there. That provides the only relief for this area's stormwater. So, so really that's going to be difficult for us. There's also a bunch of condenser units that would be very hard to maintain if we put a dense buffer back there. So in lieu, and I know this isn't quite your recommendation, but in lieu of that, what we will be proposing to city council next week is to paint that whole side of the building in lieu of planting a buffer, that we felt that that's, um, a good meet in the middle approach, given the obstacles.
Can you paint some plants on it?
Apple trees. Apple tree.
I actually have some ideas on that.
Are you doing the whole, um, building like your other buildings?
We, this is a bit, this is a bit different. The other buildings, um, the other building in Hendersonville was already a self-storage facility when we purchased it. So it looked more like a self-storage facility. Um, what I will say is we will be painting the entire building. We'll be cleaning up parking lot, the landscaping, um, as we would with any of our other properties, which we encourage you to go, to go look at. They're, they're very well kept and this will be the same way. So moving on to the next item, um, so the concern about the two-way traffic, which is down, um, really any of them, yeah, down here primarily and really through our entrances. This area will be mitigated by putting smaller units in here. So five, five-fives, ten-by-ten, so people won't need, you know, forty-foot U-Hauls to be driving through there because they can't fit a forty-foot U-Haul in those units. Um, so that was kind of our attempt to, to mitigate the need for, 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 you know, very wide drive aisles and loading zones here. Um, at the entrances, it's just, you know, due to the infrequent traffic that will be in and out of this site. We don't feel that it's an issue that we don't have twenty-four feet, given that there isn't likely going to be two-way traffic very often coming in and out of those kind of pinch points. Yeah, so regarding the, the building encroachment, um, we are in the thick of figuring that item out right now. Um, as, as Tyler mentioned, we, we are going to have to figure that out before we purchase this property. And so we have our attorney and our, you know, title agent working on this. Uh, we have uncovered information from DOT. They confirmed it was abandoned, but they also confirmed they have zero platts or deeds to reflect that abandonment. So we are, um, trying to do the best we can to get to the bottom of it. Um, and we'll keep, you know, city staff updated as we, as we find more. However, we just ask that, given the ordinance allows us to treat that as a separate issue that we'll have to deal with from this rezoning. Uh, regarding the sidewalk, um, along the front edge, one thing I'll just mention there is that Tyler mentioned there's, there's some steep slopes and, um, and riprap embankments there for drainage. And it's also, it's not only because of that drainage, but it's because of the limited right, the limited right-of-way we have there to put it, you know, to put it inside of the right-of-way. Yep, they're here. So you can kind of see, I mean, the road almost goes to the property line here. And so you you've just through the area where you would need to put a sidewalk is where the steep slopes are. So we're still exploring that and what we will do is we will either build the sidewalk or we'll, or we'll do the payment in lieu. Uh, to answer the ADA question, I believe we will. We, we are certainly retrofitting the interior of the building and the parking loading and unloading spaces to get to the ingress and egress storage. So that, that's our understanding is we have to do that and that's our, that's our plan.
I have a question about, um, lighting at night.
We will be providing lighting.
Dark sky lighting?
Yeah. Cause I'll be jumping in on this, so. Let's do it now.
The question regarding lighting.
Yeah.
How will the site be, how will the site be lit? Yeah, so at all of our, at, at all of our storage properties around the Carolinas, we perform lighting audits. Uh, and those audits take into consideration security for our customers. Uh, and, and we just performed a lighting audit about two weeks ago. And so we're in the process of contracting, uh, folks to install additional wall packs and retro, or converting uh, traditional light bulbs over to LED outfits for our, uh, parking poles, uh, in the lot. So illumination is a value add for our customers, uh, because it instills a, a bit more of a sense of security. And so, yeah, the, the lighting will be one of the first pieces addressed.
And, well, I ask that because of the hotels that are there. I'm sure that will be a consideration blinded by the light.
Sure.
At night.
Yeah, well, that's a great point. And what, what you can do, and a lot of times our consultants take these things into consideration, is either shield, put the shields on the lights or, or put them at a height where that, that kind of throw angle just won't face the hotel. So if it's, it'd just be either turn eight, ninety degrees or it would have a shield on it.
So that would be something that you would consider as a condition?
Absolutely.
What about the, um?
Can I continue on that for a moment?
Can I continue on that for a moment? I, I'm the lighting nut here, dark skies, just, just to warn you, and I liked your answer there. Uh, this is, I love this repurposing a lot, by the way, just absolutely love it. The lights that will be under the canopies, the canopies, I assume will come to a peak, uh, for drainage for rainwater. And the real question is, will the lights then be tucked up perhaps near the peak? So that the canopy will act as a shield for the lights and not let that bleed out beyond the canopy?
That's a, that's a great question. So I, actually, one other thing I meant to mention, and I'll just go ahead and tie this into, uh, was the height of the canopies. I believe somebody had asked that and they're likely going to be sixteen feet high. That's about the highest an RV will get, uh, to be able to fit under there. I will say, unless you, you know, John can answer this better than I can. I, I have not seen lights underneath the canopies, but I think it's a great idea. I think, given that sixteen feet, you know, usually your, your poles are at twenty, twenty-five, sometimes even taller, just to get that, again, that kind of that spread, um, the sixteen feet would just require a lot more lights. But I certainly think that, um, we can look at it and explore it.
Installing the lights underneath the canopy?
Using the canopy, well, we're talking about shielding lights, otherwise, so you're putting in the parking lot? The canopy would kind of act as the shield. So if the canopy edge, bottom edge is sixteen feet, maybe the lights would be at seventeen feet, seventeen-six, something in that order. So that you don't need shields on the lights because you have a de facto on with the canopy roof.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, I think, I think, I think a catch-all, I think a catch-all condition, which we can certainly are, are happy to agree to now is, um, zero-foot candles at the property line. I mean, if it's zero-foot candles at the property line, none of our neighbors can be mad at us. And so we want to say that as a part of, you know, submit photometrics as a part of the site plan approval. We can happily do that.
Thank you. What about the, um, it looks like there's a business running currently in the building at the far end, a hairdresser perhaps?
Yeah, they're in the process of relocating that business. They, um, they are aware of what's, of what's going on and that full portion of the building is a part of this conversion project to self-storage.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one more. Um, I'm sorry, I'm killing you here. The internal storage, will the, any of those be temperature controlled or not?
Every single one.
Now, according to one of an ordinance, it says that, um, temperature control is not allowed under zoning classification I one. Is that true, Will?
This is C three.
I'm sorry, Barbara, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I wanted to know, under sixteen four sixteen, it said that, um, uh, services, electrical services aren't allowed on, under zoning classification I one.
So sixteen dash four dash sixteen, um, C, no outside storage, outside storage shall be permitted when the proposed use is situated in classification other than I one.
So I one allows for temperature controlled in that building?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, the temperature controlled, I'm not sure that we have a provision in any case that does not permit temperature-controlled units.
Any other questions for the developer?
So just, I, I think, just to help clarify, the outside storage requirement is related to like goods and materials being stored, maybe in a fenced area just out on a site. It's not talking about, uh, internally accessed storage units versus the kind that you drive up to and have a roll-up door. It, it's not making that distinction.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the developer? Very good. We're going to open public comments at this time. Anybody in the room that would like to speak about this project? Come up and state your name and address.
Pauline Williams, six thousand Wood Duck Way, Wolf Pen. Um, I really commend that this could be a repurposed building. It's such an eyesore coming off twenty-six right now and it's detrimental to how we envision Hendersonville going east. And, um, I do have a question as to whether there'd be signage on the back of the building. I would hope not. And, um, also I'd like to know the color of that building. I, I think would be beautiful if there were artists that could come in and, uh, do something, um, really unusual and constructive and it would be an attractor to the building. But I just want to say, I would wish that more buildings could be repurposed like this. It's a great, great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? How about on the Zoom call? Do we have anybody that wants to raise their hand on the Zoom call? If you'd like to raise your hand, we'll unmute you.
No one's raised their hand.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment portion. Any discussion here?
Can we just add the condition about the appropriate non-intrusive lighting to the?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And I also wanted to mention that, that it's very common to put trees in a right-of-way. So the fact that you don't have the property on the back of your site doesn't necessarily mean that you can't plant in that green area. And I think since you're having to go to DOT anyway to deal with the encroachment, that it, it, it's actually having that landscape there could be very important. I mean, I, I'm, I'm glad you're painting the building, but I think you'd be painting the building anyway.
So you're, you're saying.
That's not, that's not like that, we're getting anything back, really, I mean.
There is a good, there is a good amount of property between the ramp.
And the wall, yeah.
DOT is very friendly toward doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to address that, you, you're right. We're not trying to pretend we weren't going to paint the building. We were going to paint the building. It says world of clothing. You know, i- i- in all reality, the, the truth is, and this partially answers your question too, is we would likely try to do some form of advertising there. Likely it wouldn't be spanning the entire four hundred fifty feet face of the wall. But, you know, something nice and elegant that says, that has our logo and something that is some neutral earth tone paint color that would be a vast improvement for today. And so, um, you know, we don't want to plant to obstruct the ability to do that. Um, we're just not at this, the point yet where any of that's decided, um, or really fully thought through yet. And so, um, you know, that condition will be heard again at city council and I'm sure we'll have this discussion again. But at this time, our, our hope is to leave our options open for that and still explore it at a later date. I don't think we have any problem planting trees where possible, even if it requires getting a DOT permit to do so. Um, we're just not quite sure, um, you know, something John mentioned, you know, that we've, we've turned around is, is actually working with an artist and working with the city to do a kind of mural, you know, that maybe does or doesn't, you know, include our logo somewhere else on the building, like that's kind of separate from the artwork. But, um, we're just exploring those avenues, I guess, is the, is the short and long of it.
Anything is better than what's there.
Yeah, that's true.
And we are open, open to.
Well, can we put that, do you want something?
Well, let's just leave the condition that's already there, that the B buffer, whatever it's called, that, you know, and, and then you can deal with it at commission, because maybe by then you'll have your logo and your, whatever you're going to do and, and just analyze the sightline and see how much of the buffer you could really provide.
So we're prepared to make a motion?
All right, I'll go ahead. I move, uh, the planning board recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pins nine, five, seven, nine, dash, five, six, dash, oh, eight, eight, four, and nine, five, seven, nine, dash, four, six, dash, nine, six, four, two, from C three highway business to C three C Z D highway business conditional zoning district based on the site plan submitted by the applicant and subject to the following. Permitted uses shall include, one, mini warehouses, two, all permitted C three uses on November fourth, twenty twenty-one, which are listed in the ordinance. Conditions that shall be satisfied prior to final site plan approval include city-initiated, one, the developer shall provide a B buffer along the rear property line adjacent to I twenty-six right-of-way, preferably evergreen trees selected from the recommended t- uh, tree species list. Do I do the developer initiated? Yes, developer initiated, two, the developer will provide twelve-foot wide travel lanes and a ten-foot wide parking lane where possible, as described in section sixteen dash four dash sixteen of the zoning ordinance at the, built, at the building located at one thirty-five Sugarloaf Road. However, the travel lane width and parking lane requirements may not be implemented everywhere based on existing conditions. Finding that the amended zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. This development is within a high-intensity priority infill area as designated in the comprehensive plan, chapter eight, dash, L U, one point one. Two, the development utilizes in existing large-scale commercial building with a use that is compatible with the surrounding area. And three, the development provides additional storage options for the city of Hendersonville. So our condition that we're going to add should go after the city-initiated condition number one.
The third condition.
Okay, what it, as a third condition under, um, well.
It would be number two under city.
Under, under, see, and then, and then the developer one would change to three. Okay, would be that, uh, the developer, uh, shall provide, um, a photometric plan with, uh, zero-foot candles at the property line.
No lights bleeding off the property.
Therefore, no light would be bleeding off.
Right.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second, do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Got a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn.